All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our city council meeting. If you please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
We have no request under roll call A. Doing roll call, Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
President.
Councilmember Mackin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
And Mayor Lentz.
Here. Okay, great. So, report out from closed session, please.
The council took up item D, Mr. Mayor, and denied the claim. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tom. And welcome this evening. All right, adoption of tonight's agenda. So, staff has a request to move item M after old business. How is everyone with that?
Yeah, I think that's good.
Okay.
To move it up.
To move it up, yes. And with that amendment, amended portion of our agenda, I will.
I'll make a motion to approve with the change.
A second.
All right. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Okay, awards and presentations. So, tonight, we are celebrating Women's History Month, and I have a proclamation to read. Whereas the National Women's History Alliance has designated 2025, 2025's theme for Women's History Month as moving forward together, women educating inspiring generations, celebrating the remarkable contributions of women who have shaped the course of history through their dedication to education, mentorship, and leadership. And whereas, this theme honors the collective strength, resilience, and influence of women who have empowered others by educating, inspiring, and in guiding future generations toward progress and equality. And whereas, women in education have consistently served as catalysts for change, shaping minds, opening doors, and fostering innovation while their impact continues to inspire us all, past, present, and future. And whereas, from classrooms to boardrooms, and from local grassroots movements to global initiatives, women leaders have consistently demonstrated a profound commitment to creating positive change, advancing knowledge, and inspiring action. And whereas, it is essential to recognize and celebrate the invaluable role of women in driving social, cultural, and educational progress, and to ensure their contributions continue to be acknowledged, supported, and built upon for generations to come. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that the City Council of the City of Brisbane does hereby proclaim the month of March 2025 as Women's History Month, encouraging all members of our community to reflect on and celebrate the extraordinary accomplishments of women in education, leadership, and beyond, and as they continue to inspire the world and build bridges to more inclusive tomorrow. So, tonight, we have our superintendent Nancy Bowie here to come and receive the proclamation, and I hope to hear some words from our new superintendent.
Yes. So, thank you so much, honorable council members. Thank you, Mayor Lentz. I, this is such a big deal to recognize Women's History Month. As you know, education is one of the few professions where it's primarily predominantly female. So, sometimes when children go through the school system, they think the world is like that. They think there are women in leadership positions, women who are helping them when they're having a hard day, women who are, you know, just consoling them and making sure that they get the best that they deserve. And the fact that we spotlight women's achievement and make these things prominent in our community gives children sort of, kind of a glimpse into what will happen when they leave the Brisbane bubble, which is, you know, there may be, but when you come back here and you, when you come back to Brisbane, this is a place where we honor the contributions of women. I just want to highlight some women in the room who I've had great interactions with since my time here. I've been here about seven months. I just want to just like really highlight Ingrid. She's been incredible, really friendly emails, wonderful interactions. Noreen, we've been working together with Parks and Rec. And again, primarily, staff is all female. It's been incredible supporting each other. I want to recognize Adrian. I just met her last week to do some sustainability work with our district. Her and a fellow named Dolores were wonderful. My board president Karen Lentz is in the room. She's definitely a champion for women and women's rights. Madison, we interact every month. You're always so kind. I write for Luminary. Your words are all very, very encouraging. And I also want to give a huge shout out to Chief of Police Lisa Mathias. I joke that she's my pen pal because I am texting and emailing at the same time. Like, I'm texting her the same message that I'm emailing her. And she's sending back cute emojis, and she's so thoughtful and so sweet. And I bother her late after hours on the weekends. She's always responding. I just love working with her. So, thank you so much for all that you do. And then I feel like we are here because we are supported by men who support women. So, I want to just highlight Jeremy Dennis. He's been a great partner to the Brisbane School District. He comes to our school. In fact, my first week here, he came out with our board president and like got a tour of Lipton and really showed a lot of care. And I've been felt very supported by him and his staff. So, thank you so much for all that you do. And Mayor Lentz, thank you so much for the proclamation. It's from the Brisbane School District. We really value uplifting anybody, and I think the cause and the centering kind of gender equality, making that something that the council cares about. Kids are always looking to the adults to see sort of what kind of role models, like what the role models are role modeling. So, I think it's awesome that you have taken the time, and this doesn't happen everywhere. So, it's huge for us, and we really appreciate it.
Well, thank you so much, Superintendent Bowie for.
Oh, wait, I forgot one more thing. If you're not doing anything, next Saturday is March 15. We're having, it's like a disco. It's like a little fun event called Spring Thing. Our best PTO is putting it on. Please go to thebestpto.org, get your tickets. Put on your dancing shoes. Put on your glitterious outfit. Have come out and join us. It's going to be a fundraiser to support the school, and we worked really hard, and I really encourage everyone to come.
All right. Well, thank you for that pitch. And I just wanted to thank you for coming here tonight and talking with us and showing your appreciation for being a part of this community. I know of your journey a little bit, coming to this country from Vietnam and the struggles that you had to, you know, get through and work hard. And I know you had mentors. And now, here you are in this position where you're a mentor for other young women and I know for the teachers as well. And just really appreciate the hard work that you've and the impact that you've made on the school district so far. And so, it's been just a wonderful exchange and experience with you. So, thank you for taking that job.
And we really appreciate support from the council. I know it's not, I don't know if it's evident, but Mayor Lentz came out last week or this week and did Read Across America Week at BES and read to our students. So, anytime kids can see sort of their city leadership in their schools, there may be a future mayor in that, right? You're reading to. There might be the next council person. So, you are like the celebrities in the town. Kids really ooh and ah when they hear, like that you're coming to their school in their classroom. So, I always appreciate that you take the time and that you humanize the process and that kids can see that you are just like anybody else and that you care about them, too.
Yeah, that was a lot of fun. I really enjoyed it, and I highly encourage any council member to take advantage of that opportunity. So, why don't we do a photo and.
Oh, yeah.
Come on up and we'll have all the council members.
All the ladies.
All right, let's do it.
It's like.
I'll just take it from here. And then the council.
Oh, good.
I guess. Yeah, you know, there you go.
Let me hold it really vaguely.
You have to be in the middle of all of those.
Yeah, you should be the tall person.
Yeah.
I'm not going to block you.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Very good.
We have a little height advantage, luckily.
I will see everyone.
Okay, great.
All right, one, two, and three. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's for you. Yes.
No, not frame, just a full up.
All right, thank you. All right. So, moving on to oral communications, number one. So, this is an opportunity for anyone to speak about something that's not on tonight's agenda. So, if you've turned into a slip or you just want to raise your hand, by all means, you know, let me know. All right. So, not a problem.
Anybody online?
Anyone online?
Oh, yes. No? Okay, thank you. Okay, consent calendar.
I need to recuse from item J. Does legal want me to step out of the room?
Or is anybody else recusing from anything?
No.
Yeah, then you should. Last time, we had two people, so I just said step back, but you should recuse or step out.
So, can I make a motion for C through I, and then I can recuse?
I'll second that.
Did you want to pull something?
I thought we had an item to be pulled from the consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item C, consent calendar, item C. The minutes for the February 20th City Council meeting will be pulled. Councilmember Mackin has some amendments to that.
Okay, no problem. Okay.
Are we going to pull that and make those amendments?
I'll just submit it at the next council meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And then, Madison, which item were you?
J.
J. Okay. So, you're going to make a motion for?
D through I.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All of us in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. We'll wait for Madison to leave the room for item J.
I'll make a motion to approve item J.
A second.
All right. All of us in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. We'll bring Madison back in. That was quick. All right. Moving on to item K, old business, discuss fiscal year 2026 congressional appropriation request. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Your last meeting, you, the council discussed possible projects for appropriations using congressional, excuse me, Congressman Mullins portal that he uses to accept such requests. Per the direction of the council, we brought back three projects for consideration. We are recommending that you consider one or two. As an update, I did speak to the district director of Congressman Mullins' office earlier this week, and they have not yet opened the portal, and there still is some uncertainty related to such requests in the future. So, we still don't have a sense of what the direction may be for the types of projects they'll be accepting. But I think it's important to move forward tonight with a recommendation or two that we can then submit when they do open the portal. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for staff? Madison?
I don't have any questions.
No questions for staff.
Okay. Frank?
Just one question for staff. Under the discussion section of the report, I see that we've got the Sierra Point Storm Drain Adaptation to SLR here. Was consideration given to moving that potable water line as a project as well?
No, sir. It wasn't deemed to be a priority project at this time because it's actually a relatively simple fix in the interim. At any point in time, we can intercept that line and cut a T into it, cut an isolation valve. So, it doesn't seem to be quite as urgent as the potential flooding during the sea level rise increase in the high storms.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thanks, Frank. Colleen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one question. Says as to the use of the fees, the facilities must be identified in a capital improvement plan, for example, a general plan or other public documents. Are all of these already identified in either capital improvement plan or a general plan?
No, ma'am, they're not. We'd have to update it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
It's a great question.
Any other questions for staff? All right, let's just open it up to the public. Anyone from the public wish to ask a question or comment about this item? Anyone online, Ingrid? Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. One hand is up from Chris.
All righty, Chris.
Hi. Thank you for taking my note here. I'm deeply concerned about the Bay Shore proposal that's on here and any prioritization of that before it is illuminated in some way, shape, or form. It's far too vague to be able to make an assessment, and I have seen in the past where when the city council approves something for moving forward, it suddenly just barrels through and the public ceases to be able to have any input on that. So, I'd like a little bit more clarity about what that is before it's given any priority. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chris? Okay. Any other members of the public? All right. So, council discussion. Start, Madison? I mean, Terry?
Sure. I will say that I think that the two really pertinent projects that we have on this list that we might submit would be the community center remodel and the storm drain adaptation for sea level rise, because I think both of them are very imminent issues. And if we're going to submit two projects, one is a feel-good project with the recreation center, community-based, and the other is a very serious safety issue that needs to be looked at. And so, whether Senator Mullins' office is looking for a feel-good project or a "we gotta get this done" kind of project, we've got two of them on the table that could fit whatever bill they're looking at. And so, for me, that is a priority. I know that while safety improvements on Bay Shore Boulevard is a priority, I don't think it is as urgent of need as the sea level rise. That, you know, we're going to have a $30 million, $50 million bill in the next five to seven years on. And so, I think we really need to start looking at ways to plug that hole, so to speak. So, that would be my recommendation, would be for those two projects to be pushed forward and see if we catch any fish with it.
Sure.
I have actually a question for staff.
Okay.
And this is for Randy. Do you think that there would be other opportunities to get some grant funds for the Sierra Point Storm Drain Adaptation, just because, like, there seem to be, well, I don't know in this current administration, but I feel like sea level rise-related mitigations and repairs is like a whole set of grants that are out there from maybe quite a few different sources. Whereas, the community center remodel is probably, like, not as many grants that this project would require. And this is an assumption I'm making, so tell me if I'm wrong. But is that, would you say that, like, there's more opportunity to get money for Sierra Point if we, you know, try to prioritize the community center for this? That there might be money out there readily available, readily available? But there might be money out there, you know, for the storm drains?
You ask a really fair question, and it actually made me pause and put my head down and think about it for a little minute. So, what I'm thinking on are the type of grant opportunities that we've seen, and notwithstanding the seriousness of sea level rise and the way people really do seem to understand it, at least in this part of the country. The opportunities that I've seen really are focused on multi-jurisdictional opportunities for sea level rise at this point. So, that's the latest grant we turned in was the Ocean Protection Council, and we did that with One Shoreline in the City of South San Francisco. And I think that has the opportunity to be very, very possible. The other grant that we have received that was specific to us, but it wasn't just specific to us, was a grant from Caltrans to study the impact of sea level rise on the lagoon and Sierra Point Parkway, which they actually own in FEE, and on US 101, which they own. So, I'm thinking based on what we see right now, that getting a project just specific to help storm drain impact at Sierra Point is not going to check those boxes of being multi-jurisdictional.
Yeah.
So, I think that these community project funding, these projects that are sometimes referred to as earmarks, is probably a more likely grant opportunity for that type of project.
Good. That's what I need to know.
Yeah. And, you know, I have a question also for a city manager. So, Jeremy, when we met with Mario, he gave us some suggestions of what projects he thought might be funded with the current majority in Congress. And community centers were?
Community centers were at the top of the list, although I do believe that that was a bit of a reflection backwards on what was possible under previous administrations. So, I think there is a question mark about what will be available and what types of projects might even be eligible for something like this right now. So, that was, we were hoping to time this around the time that guidance is normally released, and given what's happening in Washington, that hasn't happened yet.
Okay.
My suggestion, if it's the will of the council, because it seems like staff thinks those two projects in particular are, would be really beneficial, and that seems to be what Terry is.
Recording in progress.
And because we don't have further guidance at this time, maybe the council could authorize staff to submit both of those, should they align with the goals that become more clear as time goes on, and let Mullins' office pick, or that staff, if there is more guidance, could just select whatever one they feel is most likely to get approved.
Well, let's hear from the other council members and see what they have to say. So, Colleen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is my assessment. Astertaining the current administration in Washington's antagonistic nature towards California and not wanting to help us do anything, I think that anything is going to be a tough sell. I'm more concerned about how much harder that could be going down the road in a year from now or two years from now. Looking at all of these projects, they're all worthy. I don't have a problem with any of them, but if I was to choose one, it would be storm drain adaptation. But I would also include the potable water supply. I think that that's a good sell on this as a feasibility for being selected. When I look through what other cities have submitted, yes, there's some good touchy-feely things, but there are quite a few that also have to do with drainage, pump stations. So, these are nuts and bolts infrastructure projects. And due to the fact that that line item is listed at 5.5 million, which is the highest one, and it requires a match, where are we ever going to get that kind of money in the next four years to do that project? So, in my estimation, I would just go for this one and say this is urgent, and I would make a really good case for how urgent it is because we have to provide potable water, and the storm drains already are not working out there. Thank you.
And it might be that if that project were to be titled more as potable water rather than sea level rise adaptation, it might, and I don't know if Senators Mullins' office with their, if they have discretionary funds, are beholden to the mindset of the current administration or not, but that might be a better way to title it rather than titling it for sea level rise.
I think that's a fine suggestion.
And through the mayor, if I may, just as a reminder, we do have a CPF project already funded at Lake Street Pump Station.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
We already have a potable water project that's going to be funded through a CPF project at the Lake Street Pump Station. So, I guess my point, I should probably be more direct. I think my point would be it's probably less likely that we would get a second one in a row, since we already have one from that bucket, if you will.
Okay.
All right.
I'll stand corrected.
Frank?
Sure. Thank you. I think all of council raises some really good points. You got to spend some time out at Sierra Point, and the storm drain situation out there is today. It's happening today. This is not something that they're predicting is going to happen. You can go out there today and you see the weird vegetation, potential mold. The ground is just squishy. So, I think that this one is definitely a priority since it is really a today problem. But speaking of today problems, the community center, right now, we're only using 50% of it because the other 50% is just in really bad. it because the other 50% is just in really bad shape. The roof is leaking. I'm really fearful that if we don't do something with this building in the short term that we could potentially lose it, and it is such a critical building and a critical location in our town. So I'm supporting both the storm drain adaptation and the community center. I would recommend going forward with those.
Can I ask a question, follow up to that? Today we got some, well, this week, we got some payment registers on what have been issued, and in those registers was Angelo's Roofing for the visitation, the library building? Was that something that was just a stopgap or did that correct the immediate leakage?
I would say it was a patching that corrected the immediate leakage. That's how I would classify it.
Okay.
So the building isn't leaking right now, but it does eventually need a new roof.
It needs a new roof. I understand that. Okay, great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that is what that line item was for.
All right. Madison, did you wanna say something or?
No, I still would like to move forward with my former suggestion.
Yeah, I think that seems to be the direction of the majority of the council, to have the two items. We're all in agreement with the one, the Sierra Point Storm Drain Adaptation with, you know, probably some modifications to, not saying sea level rise, and then the community center. So, okay.
I wanna set ourselves up to get some money and however they, whatever project tickles their fancy, I wanna, I don't wanna put all our eggs in one basket if that one project doesn't do it.
Well, that was staff's recommendation for one or two projects. So I think as long as staff can prepare the documentation and be ready to go with it within a timely manner, once those parameters come out, then I think that that's a good way to go.
All right. So moving on to item M, discussion of vehicular traffic flow and parking on Visitation Avenue during peak traffic times. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Lenz, members of the council. Over the years, and particularly in the last few months, council members and staff have received feedback on traffic and parking issues on Visitation Avenue. Per the mayor's request, this item's been placed on the agenda tonight to provide a forum for community members to share their concerns about what they see related to these issues on visitation, for the staff to share feedback on our relevant policies and procedures related to how we approach parking and traffic issues on visitation, and hear any direction from the council on next steps. I did wanna note that while certainly there's great interest in having a conversation with, from some community members about the broader traffic and parking issues in town, tonight's focus is solely on visitation. And with that, I'd like to turn it over first to the chief of police, who has some prepared remarks.
Great, thank you.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share how the police department handles general traffic enforcement. Officers conduct general traffic enforcement and address immediate parking safety issues as part of their regular patrol duties. Aside from routine traffic and parking enforcement, officers also conduct directed traffic enforcement in locations where complaints indicate a need during specific times of the day, such as Visitation Avenue. Officers have been conducting traffic enforcement for the past two weeks on Visitation Avenue during peak traffic hours, which is during lunchtime, which would be 11:30 to 1:30, and evening hours, 5:00 to 6:30. During this directed enforcement period, officers address 16 double parking violations and two unsafe moving violations specifically around the library and food establishments within the two blocks between Monterey and Mariposa Streets. The lack of parking availability was also identified during this enforcement period, which may have contributed to these traffic violations. Although it's our goal to conduct daily traffic and parking enforcement, it can be affected by calls for service that require an immediate response from our officers and challenging due to the lack of personnel resources. Our minimum staffing is two officers on duty per shift, which can be challenging in our ability to continuously provide routine traffic and parking enforcement. One investigative call for service can tie up both officers on duty for an undetermined amount of time, along with having to meet the demands of an active investigation, as well as handling any other calls that are pending. We realize the importance of traffic and parking enforcement, and we do our best to balance those needs, along with our investigative demands and routine calls for service, as our primary goal is keeping our Brisbane community safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Macias. All right, do any council members have questions for either Jeremy or the Chief Macias? So I'll start with Frank.
No questions at this time.
Okay. Colleen?
No, I have no questions. Thank you.
Terry?
Nope.
Madison?
I have a question about street cleaning. I know we did it prior to the pandemic, and then we had, we stopped it during the pandemic, and then we tried to start it up again, but there was, we were contracting with South San Francisco, right? And like that was spotty at best. They were sometimes showing up, sometimes not, if my memory serves me correctly. And did we just cancel that contract and we have no street cleaning today or on visitation?
We terminated the contract with South City. We have a private company doing the work that they used to be doing, and they're doing it quite successfully. And we find that they're quite amenable to doing it by hand when they need to, so we've had less need to enforce on visitation during the street sweeping hours.
Because, okay, well, the next part is a comment, so I will just...
All right. Okay, so, all right, looks like we're ready to open it up to the public. So I have a couple of slips. So why don't we start with Sarah Mills?
Good evening. My name is Sarah Mills. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today about this important topic on visitation, and I recognize that it is focused on visitation tonight. But I would like to say that what I'm going to propose, I hope, is taken into consideration for all of the streets and potential street safety, street safety measurements that we can, we can really put together. So I think the fact that what happened recently is a horrific and tragic, tragic event puts even more spotlight on the fact that we need to put in place some more measures on how we improve street safety, yes, on visitation. And I also appreciate, thank you, chief, police chief, for letting us know. It was very informative to understand what you all are doing to enforce street safety and parking violations. That said, I think there's some low-cost efforts that we should be considering on visitation as well as other streets. I think there needs to be stop signs in place on all four-way intersections. I have had many a times where I am walking my three-year-old daughter, and I've had conversations with a lot of other parents in the community about how cars just fly through the intersection on visitation, but on other streets as well. And so I feel like having stop signs, which to me, I am not obviously a part of the council or a part of the financial decisions, but that is a low-hanging fruit option I think we should definitely consider. I also suggest that we consider other options such as the "see me" signs. I don't know if you are familiar with this. I did write a letter with a link off to what that is, and I've seen this implemented in other towns with a lot of success. Those are signs that pedestrians can pick up and use so that cars can see them. I also suggest that we have more, I don't actually know what the speed limit is on visitation, but I would ask us to reconsider that because it is such a high-traffic street. I love walking down visitation and the library and all of the different stores on visitation with my daughter. That said, there's oftentimes where I feel like traffic is going just way too fast. So I think there are low-hanging fruit, low-cost options that we need to consider right away, not just for visitation, but for other streets as well. Because what I love about this town is the charm of a town that was built before cars, right? This town was built when people didn't own cars or only had one car. The streets are small, the houses are close together, and it encourages walkability. That said, people drive like it was built after cars, and I think that we really need to consider different measures that help to slow down the traffic, help to increase walkability, and hopefully try, hopefully prevent any future horrific tragedies. So thank you for taking the time. I'm very obviously passionate about this. I also encourage you all to continue to engage with the community, and I wanna recognize the city manager, Jeremy, for your very quick response to some of our emails, but I encourage you to continue to have that outreach because I have had many conversations with many of my network of families in this community. And while we appreciate the efforts that are in place, there needs to be a lot more done because I would absolutely hate that we have any kind of tragic accidents in the future because we didn't consider putting a stop sign in. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Paul, you're next.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Yes, like Sarah, I'm also another concerned parent. I have a one-year-old and a three-year-old at home, as well as a dog parent as well. I've been living in town for over 10 years now, well over 10 years, and I've walked almost every street in this town. And I know this is focused on visitation particularly, but I've just seen an increase in just reckless driving around town, and I think this is, I would love to talk about the superset of this, but I've seen this in visitation as well. I have my letter attached, the addendum today of the letter I wrote, in addition, a letter I wrote back in 2023, June of 2023, where I wrote, Clay, at the time, was the city manager, and the council, and brought up, just on our street, we live on San Benito, two houses from the school, where I'd see dangerous driving as kids were walking down essentially a one-way road. And I was just worried something bad would happen. And then I replied to my email from that time, which was pretty much ignored after the tragic accidents that Sarah brought up as well. And just wanna, you know, keep ahead of this. And so I think with what Chief Macias said, I think police presence is essential to this. I think, you know, people think they can get away with it with this reckless driving and speeding because there's, I mean, as was mentioned, that we only have at minimum two staff or two police on call, whatever you'd call it. At the time, they're probably writing up reports, things like this. I've had conversations, I've called the police and made these requests, just saying, hey, it's good to have presence out there. Also, you know, we should start thinking about, you know, speed limits around town, you know, especially around the school, visitation, you know, these high-traffic areas, thinking about that. And also, I mentioned in my letter as well, cameras, right? San Francisco has done a lot in this area where they're gonna be enforcing a lot of traffic through cameras and, you know, speeding, reckless driving, beyond enforcing this through cameras, which, you know, could be a great river's news stream as well with what I've seen around town. As, you know, I've pretty much walked every street with my dog in town and have seen all the different, you know, unique, as Sarah mentioned as well, you know, this, it was kind of built before cars were really a primary form of travel. And so it's very unique, and I don't think a lot of the drivers in town kind of respect that, that lack of visibility. So anyways, that's kind of my spiel. I'll stop there with this. I can keep going beyond the scope of this, but I'd love to talk about it more.
Thank you, Paul, for your letter, and thank you, Sarah, for your letter as well and coming tonight. So I only have two slips. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to come up and speak before the council? All right, anyone online?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have Chris on the line and Michael.
Okay. So do I just call on, okay, so Michael, why don't you start?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. This is Michael Barnes. I'm a Brisbane resident, and I'd like to relate two experiences I've had on visitation. About six months ago, I was driving back into town, and I stopped at a stop sign in front of the post office, and a motorcyclist blew past me through the stop sign and up Visitation Avenue. I was overjoyed when a police officer parked on San Francisco Street, lit him up and chased him down and gave him a citation. Second of all was earlier this week, I was riding my bicycle up Visitation, and just before getting to Melissa's, I encountered a pickup truck that was double parked. And so I had to ride over the double yellow line into oncoming traffic to get around him. And then as I approached the grocery store, a police officer came out of the parking lot and drove down the street, I assume, to give the double-parked pickup truck a ticket. I think enforcement really changes behavior, and I am so happy to have seen these two instances of enforcement of traffic violations on visitation. I hope the police department keeps it up. I understand the constraints on personnel, but every citation issued changes behavior. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Michael. Chris?
Hi there. Thank you for letting me speak. I really sympathize with the police department's challenge of trying to cover the entire town all day long with the limited staff that they have. So what we really should start considering are passive mechanisms to be able to manage the problem. It looks like the city has an appetite for quick-build solutions to test if something can help and work. And I'd like to propose an unusual solution for, in particular, visitation, that would discourage the double parking and also slow down traffic, and that is to put bollards, flexible bollards in the, as a test, down the middle of the road. People will not be able to double park because they can't be passed. And we know that when people encounter something unfamiliar or that narrows their access to the road, they will slow down. I hope you'll consider this as a possibility, at least at some sections of visitation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, for that suggestion. All right.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, to interrupt. If we could, a couple of the suggestions that were relayed tonight, I think Randy had a few comments just related to stop signs and their use and speed limit issues that I think would be good to...
This is good because I also have a set of questions related to that, too. So maybe if you just want to talk about that.
All right, Randy?
Sorry, having trouble finding the green button. So I don't wanna belabor the issue here. You know, certainly I've been the city engineer here for 24 years, and I've raised two sons here that are both graduates of BES at Littman and, you know, obviously meandered around the town a little bit myself, so I've got a sense of it. But I think that perhaps the discussion about stop signs and some of these other unique ideas might be best if they were forwarded to Complete Street Safety Committee.
Can you put the mic a little closer? I can't hear you.
I'm so sorry. Here, here, I will bend forward a little more. So I think those issues might be more holistically addressed at the Complete Street Safety Committee. The members of that committee have spent a lot of time educating themselves on traffic control devices, on traffic engineering, the history of things that do work and the history of things that don't work and why. So perhaps that might be a good place for some of these discussions to go. And I think I'll leave it at that unless you have direct questions for me.
I do.
All right, why don't you start, Madison?
We've talked about this extensively, I feel like, in so many different meetings, whether it be, you know, last time we discussed this was related to San Bruno Avenue. But from your professional experience, adding more stop signs, what do you think the outcome of that is? Is there benefit, and if so, how much?
The history of the studies is that when you put in additional stop signs that are not necessary pursuant to engineering warrants, is that you actually create more accidents because you get a mix of those people who become frustrated and who do California rolls, they go through the stop, they say, I don't need to stop at this intersection, they have a sense of it, and you get the other mix of people who are the law-abiding citizens, and they come to a full stop, but the people that have decided they're gonna do California rolls are behind them, and they get into accidents. And so we have the car versus car, and unfortunately, we also end up with car versus pet accidents because of the same mentality. It's unfortunate because pedestrians oftentimes think, I have the right of way and I'm just gonna step out in traffic. And yes, you may have the right of way, but it's still a 3,500-pound vehicle that is rolling down the hill at you. So the impact of not really being sure that you're gonna be safe is potentially deadly. So we very much struggle with putting in additional stop signs for those reasons.
Can you just speak to what the speed limit is on visitation? Can you just speak to what the speed limit is on visitation?
25 miles an hour.
Yep. I know that was us. And I just wonder, like, I think obviously a lot of this stems from parking challenges, right? That's creating the need to double park. So I would love to see us or this Complete Streets and Safety Committee spend some time around how we can get vehicles to move more often. I think part of this is exacerbated by, you know, we did safe routes to school, and we took out some parking spots for that. So we did some things to prioritize pedestrians. And also, it may have caused more of these problems because we have the double parking because there's less parking. Now, we have the California law that's going to be enforced, which is parking near intersections.
Right, AB 413, yes.
Uh-huh. And so that's taking out a lot of parking as well, which will likely exacerbate the issue. And it's doing so, you know, to make it safer for pedestrians. It's like you do things to hopefully increase safety, but then there are these trade-offs, like there's less parking, and so is this a vicious cycle? So I think that, my perception is that there are a lot of vehicles on visitation that don't move. And there are, you know, there are a lot of businesses, there are also several homes, and so I understand people wanting to park in front of their home all the time. But I think that there is value in having some kind of weekly mandatory move-your-vehicles so that we can start to identify vehicles that may just be hanging out there and occupying spots 24/7 that are contributing to the problem. So I think that that is really a low-hanging fruit. This is something that we've done before, and I don't know if you have to say because of street cleaning, like, I think there are places in San Francisco that say no parking from this time to this time, and you just have to move your car.
And I believe that most of visitation is signed for two hours. And there are opportunities, there are automated devices right now that companies are willing to put in at no cost to the city that automatically write parking tickets. They're ballard-type devices, they kind of look like a short parking meter, if you will, and they're operated on sunlight, and that opportunity exists.
There also is, you know, we have some 24-minute zones in town. We have them by Madhouse, we have them in front of Julie's. I think that people respect that one in front of Julie's, but the one in front of Madhouse, near Madhouse, former Hilltop Market, definitely not. A lot of parking there from the neighbors. So that makes it a challenge for people visiting that business, even though there is a parking lot. So I think, you know, there are those spaces that hopefully we could try to enforce more, but then it becomes an issue of, you know, investing in additional support, like what you mentioned, or you're spreading our officers more thin or trying to get another officer, which also has a lot of costs. So I think those are, are you familiar with the semi-signs that were mentioned by a member of the public?
Yes, my staff placed one up at, it's on Mission Blue Drive in Checker Spot.
How much do those cost?
They're very, they're very inexpensive.
Maybe we can put some of those.
I think that'd be a great idea, particularly if we put them at the crosswalks so that we've already identified as safe routes to school, where we have the bulbouts and such, and where the Complete Streets Safety Committee, over multiple iterations, has gone to a lot of trouble to try and identify those locations where we'd like to get people to cross. And I think you're mounting a basket to a light pole, and you're putting these red flags in it, so that's not expensive at all.
Well, the city also invested on visitation and Mariposa with the flashing. And I think that that's definitely helped as well. So, okay, those are, those are my questions for staff.
All right, so Colleen?
Oh, you probably don't want to call on me because I have tons of notes here. I'm just, okay, I'll try to be brief. It's really sad to hear this coming up again. I was on the first Complete Streets Committee in 2012, and here we are. We're still talking about it. How can that be? Why? Because people have bad behavior. That never goes away. It's human nature. The question is, what do you do about it? Complete Streets, when we were on it, Randy, you talked about stop signs, we were told you cannot use stop signs for traffic regulation, for speed, because it also impedes emergency vehicles. Complete Streets did all kinds of observations, nothing new. We had always identified three streets, Mission Blue, San Bruno, and Bay Shore as being excessive speed. That's years ago. Observations. We spent on Complete Streets hours in observations near BES, figuring safe route to school, most important. And what we saw, I guarantee you, made our jaws drop. Because parents dropping off kids were some of the worst scofflaws. Doing U-turns in the middle of the street with kids in the crosswalk that they didn't see, pulling out around other cars because they dropped their child off and wanted to get to work sooner, and almost hit an oncoming car. And we observed this over and over every day. And you'd think the parents, of all people, would be the most concerned about safety in those areas. One day, a couple of years ago, Paul, you were there, Brandon Allstrom talked about problem on San Bruno, we had a meeting. One day after that, I took an hour, I parked near the curb on San Bruno, and I just sat there and I watched traffic. And it was noon time, and then I did it closer to 4:00, 5:00 PM. And what I saw shocked me, it wasn't what I expected. Yes, the cars coming down San Bruno come too fast. Do they all stop at the stop sign? No, some of them kind of slowed down, cruised through. But what I saw that just blew my mind, cars on the side street don't stop at all, they just turn around the corner. And I saw an elderly lady almost hit, I saw a mom with a stroller almost hit, and I saw a lady with a dog almost hit because of cars coming around the corners. So we've got a problem of lax attitudes. I will say, I think one of the things that impressed me most, and I don't know who it was, it could have been Brandon on the corner there of Mendocino and San Bruno, whoever put up the signs that said, "Drive like your kids live here." That was amazing because within about two, three weeks, boy, did people slow down. They were stopping at the stop signs. My point being, sometimes the guerrilla tactics are the most effective things. We could spend a fortune on cameras and police officers, and people are still going to speed, but peer pressure. I'm going to tell you one other story. Many moons ago, I lived in another state. Most of my adult life spent in California, but I lived in another state. And it was interesting there because if you got a ticket in the city I lived in, they published your name in the paper with the fact that you got a ticket for speeding X miles per hour over the speed limit. And guess what? Everybody in town would be like, oh my God, did you see so-and-so got a ticket? They were going really fast. I don't know if that would be legal today with ACLU and citizens' rights, but it was so effective because people were so terrified of being in that paper and named. It just cut the problems overnight.
Facebook.
Peer pressure. It was so effective. So peer pressure is really powerful. And how you utilize that here in terms of addressing this, I don't know. We don't have school-crossing guards anymore.
And we do. Andy?
Well, but not at every one of these intersections. There were times many years ago, you had every intersection with a stop sign, we'd have a school-crossing guard, oh my God, we got to get the kids across. There you go. It's not as much. So the kids walk a lot on safe route on their own. The other thing that I hadn't heard about, and thank you for everyone who showed up to tell your stories, I think it's important to hear about it. U-turns on visitation. We have a business district up there, it's one-way in, and then people go, I don't want to go down those side streets. They just do massive U-turns all over. I've almost been broadsighted so many times. And if you're going up the hill on visitation and you want to park, you see a spot on the other side of the street, you just go across the double-yellow line, which is essentially a U-turn, because then the perpendicular spots or diagonal spots are facing the other direction. That's really unsafe. And yet, everybody does it. And I've even seen big trucks do it, where they're just like, I just want to turn around. So Christopher Klauske, talking about bollards, I don't know if we could do that. It would mean that anybody going up the hills got to go down the side streets if they don't find parking, parallel parking going up the hill. But we either have to find some low-tech solutions, I think would make a difference, or find ways to make signs and put big pressure on all of our neighbors, because they're the ones that are hurting you. They don't, they're distracted, or they don't, you know, they don't mean it, but they don't think about it, and they need to think about it. As far as the people parking on visitation overnight, there's always permits. And the permits could stipulate that there's only so many hours per day that they can park there, but it would give them that preferential. To have Complete Streets solve this for you, since I dealt with it 12 years, 2012, I don't think you're going to find a solution there. I think the solution's going to come from the community. And yes, we might have to put more money into it, and we could keep gathering suggestions, and we can use our city media to try to encourage more suggestions to come in and then see, because we have budget meetings coming up, what we can fund and maybe add to it. And one, instead of just throwing everything, hoping it works, try some low-tech first, and then we can keep refining that. But the peer pressure, I'm telling you, it is the most effective. And I would love to see names published of people caught double parking and speeding. It would stop it overnight, I'm telling you. Thank you.
And not picking up their dog poop. That's another one.
And not picking, yes, in front of my house, especially.
That's a good shaming one. Throw that one in while we're at it.
All right, let's not digress here, but.
Mr. Mayor, we do have a hand raised from the public, so let me know when.
Okay, when we come back around. Okay, Frank?
Let me just start by asking a question for just purposes of understanding. If we were to consider lowering a speed limit, focusing on visitation right now, I don't know if this is Jeremy, I don't know if this is to Randy, but if we were to lower a speed limit, can you just explain a little bit about what that process would entail? Is it more than putting up a sign?
There's a small engineering traffic survey we would have to do. It's not undoable, but I think the question does come back to, so what? Can you enforce it? That's really what it comes down to. I think the chief has spoken very eloquently and clearly about the resources she has available to her. And if you've got a situation, you've got a traffic stop, and both officers have to go out, one to do the stop and one for cover, then you don't have anybody there. It could be a timeframe, and depending upon what, who she pulls, I'm sorry, I'm talking for the chief now, depending on what sort of situation, it could be hours and hours. So it doesn't matter that you've lowered it.
I think that was a fair answer. I wasn't questioning the resource, I was just questioning the process of changing the limit. It's been my observation, and most people know that I live at the intersection of Mendocino and Visitation. We have a pretty massive amount of Grubhub and Uber Eats drivers that service Lucky House, Boba Guys. And this is just my observation, right? There's no stats behind this, but these are a big group of the offenders that double park because they're only going to be a second to run in and grab the package. So I think as we're serving this up to Complete Streets, I think maybe the recommendation is maybe make some accommodations for those delivery drivers, just a thought. And then Councilperson Mackin was talking about the intersection of San Bruno and Mendocino, and I will tell you, I saw not one, but two identical silver Priuses coming from, one doing, going westbound and one going southbound. Both decided to do a California roll in front of me and my dog, and they ran into each other. Like five miles an hour is the slowest speed accident I've ever seen. But they both looked really shocked because they didn't even see each other, and it was two of the identical, identical same car, which is kind of crazy. So that's definitely an ongoing problem there. That's all I have to say.
Is it possible for us to do like a five-minute or a 15-minute loading-unloading, like, spot on each side of Visitation between Monterey and Mariposa?
Yes, ma'am, if that's the council's pleasure, we could.
Because that might, I mean, again, it comes down to enforcement, but if you have something that's like a, I think shorter than 24 minutes. I think a 24-minute, someone's going to go in and try to have their whole meal in that time. But if you had something, a smaller window.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If I could comment on what Councilmember Davis said. Randy, you spoke about those bollards, and I got literature from the manufacturer, what Randy's talking about. They look like a bollard, they're solar-powered, and there's a little window around the top of it that has a camera. And if someone double parks, or if they park in the space, I think you could set a timer on it, it records the car and issues a ticket then, not on the spot, but it's mailed out. So I guess they record the license plate. I do not know what those cost. I don't think they would help the double parking. But if we had certain 15-minute or five-minute drop-off pickup zones, we could perhaps purchase a couple of those that would at least keep people circulating.
So, if I may. I, too, got the information on the bollards with the automatic tickets, and it sounds like that that company provides them at no cost to the city because they get all the revenue. And so it would be tickets based on what the service is for them to put in, and so the price, we may have no control over whether it's a $25 ticket or a $150 ticket, depending on how many tickets they are intending to get. It is a money-making thing for them. And they say that it is going to stop people from impeding your traffic, and that's very possible, but that is their business model. One of the things I wanted to say was that, you know, we talk about citations and that it could be a moneymaker for the city. And since we don't have our own clearinghouse for citations, they have to go to a third-party processor. If, and I'm going to use pretend numbers here because they don't have the exact figures, but on a $50 ticket, we may net $5 from that after the processing, the, all of the things that go into it. It's a very, very low return, and so that means that it doesn't pay for that officer or that parking enforcement person to actually come out and write those tickets. It's really a lost leader to the city to even process those. And so tickets are not, it may be painful to the person, it's not going to be a good solution for the city necessarily. It certainly isn't going to increase our availability of funds to do more parking enforcement or those kind of things. Years ago, when we discussed this, I was under the impression that the 25 mile-an-hour speed limit was as low as we could enforce because of the way you'd have to detect someone is going 15. So it's a problem for the police department to enforce a 15 mile-an-hour speed limit because there's no legitimate way that the state will approve that you're proving that they're going 15 miles an hour or over it by a slight amount. Because the tolerance level and the technology wasn't there then, that might have changed now. But I understand that we had a problem trying to put a 15 mile-an-hour speed limit on things because of that reason, because of the inequity on being able to tell how fast people are going. And it was interesting, after I got Paul's email, I tried doing 15 miles an hour in Brisbane. And I drove around, and it felt like I was scoping out the neighbors or looking at the flowers while I was driving, and I was going very slow. And then I went down, and I was in front of Councilmember Davis, who was behind me from picking up her lunch. And I seriously thought about. And I seriously thought about, let's see what she does if I do 15 miles an hour going around the curve by the park. And I started to do it, and I thought, oh, this is just going to make her upset. And she's going to be like, what is she doing? Because it felt like I was at walking speed. I mean, I really was at almost walking speed at 15 miles an hour, it felt like. And I thought, I can't do this. If I get at least to 20 or 25, otherwise people are going to be upset, going around me, honking, creating more of a distraction if on a regular street in regular traffic, when, you know, it's not pouring down rain, or it's not that you're trying to go 15 mile an hour on our streets. So I can see that as being an issue. Councilmember Mackin talking about peer pressure. Let's get a group of parents out at the school that sit there and they write down, and they wouldn't have a privacy issue saying, hey, I saw Susie's mom pull a U.E. illegally. And talk to the schools about maybe having that peer pressure built in to their PTA group or their support group. I think that that might work. I would have no idea if publishing the names of scofflaws would be legal. But I think that a group of citizens could do that. And it might be surprising that, you know, maybe we know a third or a quarter of the people that are doing the things that are illegal by sight. And maybe we wouldn't, it just, it really is going to depend on who's doing it at what time and how many Uber drivers in town. But in my opinion, the Uber drivers tend to be really, really cautious because they can't afford to get tickets. So they tend to stop at stop signs. Package delivery people, not so much. So I think that the information about what speed limits we can and can't enforce, even if we had the police power, the manpower to do it, is good information to get to the Complete Streets group. And I think the education part versus the ticketing is important to let people know that, you know, speeding's an issue. But that's only an issue when it's somebody else doing the speeding, not necessarily when you're doing the speeding or not stopping at a stop sign. It's really easy to point the finger at somebody else and not point the finger at yourself when you're driving around. So those are my comments.
Thank you.
I have a question, if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure.
So, um, I think this is important because it's been referenced a few times tonight, and it's been referenced in emails to us, and this is for you, Lisa. The accident that we had with pedestrians on Visitation. In your perspective, what was, what was the key contributor to that accident?
It was, it was a DUI.
Right.
Parking was not relevant to this particular incident.
So do you believe that any of like, any of these suggestions that have been pointed out tonight, had we had all of those things, would any of those things impacted that accident? Would that, would that have made that accident not happen?
I don't believe so.
So aside from that accident, and we should call it a tragedy, really. Aside from that tragedy, are you, can you give a figure of how many vehicular accidents we have a month, a quarter, a year in Brisbane? Because I live on the corner of Mendocino and Visi, in San Bruno. And I assume that other people are never going to stop at that stop sign. Wherever I'm going, I'm just assuming the other car's not stopping because they often don't. And that's just what I've learned, and that's how I've adapted my behavior, knowing what everyone else is doing on San Bruno, just for my own personal safety. And same, if you were going down San Bruno to the Five Points at the San Bruno stop, whoever's on Visitation is not stopping for you if you're on Mendocino. And that's why we reconstructed that area to see if there was more visibility, if cars would stop for you from other intersections or other streets. And I think that's improved. But we see like a lot of people behaving badly. But really, what is like the scope of this? If we're looking at outcomes, how many accidents are we really seeing on our streets?
So in the last five years, we had a total of seven collisions. Out of those seven, one was a crossing. So running the stop sign or actually going through the stop sign when the pedestrian was still partially in the crosswalk. And we also had four that were, that were illegal U-turns, two that were unsafe backing, and two that were unsafe turning movement. And I believe those were the ones that if you're going up Visitation, you make a left into a parking stall at either Julie's or at Midtown Market, would fall under that collision.
So these exclude, like Bay Shore, we're talking about like things on our, in central Brisbane?
We're talking about just Visitation itself.
Visitation itself?
Yes. So you're saying you're averaging in the last five years, so maybe an average of one per year.
So what about the rest of Brisbane? I would say in central Brisbane, because I think Bay Shore is its own animal. But do you have any idea of like, in central Brisbane, how many accidents we have?
I do not, but I, but I don't believe it's a lot.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Alrighty, so Frank?
This question is for the chief. Based upon a conversation that we were just having here, we used to use a product called Radar when detecting speeds, and it would use radio waves. And based upon what Councilperson O'Connell was saying, it was very difficult to use that technology when we were talking about low speeds. I did a police ride-along with you, then I got to spend some time in a squad car. As such, I'm aware that we are using a product called Lidar, which is what self-driving cars use, and that uses light technology to measure speed. And I think we can actually measure speed now to the one one-hundredth of a mile per hour. We do have that technology in our squads, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that is all.
Alrighty, so I have a question for City Manager Dennis. So, you know, a lot of, I think there's been a lot of great suggestions of things that we can do. In your staff report, the last bullet point under background talks about lack of resources. So, you know, what suggestions do you, can you provide for the council to give you direction, potentially of coming up with some additional funding sources to install safety elements on our streets?
Thank you for the question through the chair. There certainly would be some grant opportunities. I do think one theoretical resource could be public safety impact fee or something of that ilk. The, you know, the resource allocation, it depends on what we're also talking about, too. What kind of changes you'd like to see on Visitation? For instance, if the bollards were interesting, because Randy said that those are free. We could try those out, we could experiment with those. Making modest changes to the street related to loading and unloading, that's very inexpensive. That would not, we can accommodate that in our normal budgets. And I was chatting with the chief a bit a moment ago. I think another place where we would see perhaps some overtime, but we could, for a period of time, continue our directive enforcement opportunities on Visitation and see how that helps change behavior. We could do that Monday through Friday, we could do that a couple days a week randomly. And, correct me if I'm wrong, as you said, I think it would be potentially some overtime, but that would be the primary, primary cost associated with that. So this is some short-term, low-hanging fruit. If the council was interested in having someone who was full-time in the traffic enforcement regime, that's probably going to cost the city anywhere between $120 and $150,000 a year. So that would obviously require, likely, you're not going to find a revenue source for that. You're going to have to make some changes to your budget to accommodate that. But yes, it does depend on what you're considering.
Also, we could do more like mechanisms to get people to move their cars more regularly on Visitation. I feel like, for low cost.
Got it, got it. So Jeremy, like, all these suggestions, you would put them together, compile them, and then work with staff and Complete Streets?
Yes.
And then Complete Streets would evaluate that? And then there would be a recommendation, or I would think a whole suite of recommendations that would then eventually come back to the city?
Yes, yes. And this, I'm sort of riffing here a little bit, and I'm looking at Randy. One possibility to, would be to sort of time-set the work that the Complete Streets committee is doing on this, so it doesn't extend for a period of time that is unpalatable to the community. I think it, to show that there's some action, we would, I would suggest, you know, three, four months where they're doing some intensive work. But again, I don't want to get in front of you if there's a resource issue at all. Sounds like that's okay.
Yeah, no, that would be great. No, I greatly appreciate that. You know, I just want to thank the people who showed up today and spoke, and also online, and people who wrote their letters. Obviously, this is, you know, an issue that you care passionately about. I think everyone on the council feels the same way. And this is how we get stuff done. I know we have another, I see it. So I'll call on that person in just a bit. So, you know, I was, I was with some third graders. I think it was yesterday, was it yesterday in grade or the day before?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. And they came to City Hall, it was a government thing, and I let them be mayor for 10 seconds. And they lined up here and they came up to the dais. And I asked them, you know, why do you want to be mayor? And most of the kids said, because I want to make the town safe. Right, these are the third graders. So they know too. And so, you know, that's a good sign. I'm really glad that you brought up the crosswalk patrol. I did that when I was in the sixth grade. And we would, it was a cool team. And we would gather in the morning, we'd get to school early, and we'd get our hat and our little strap, you know, like a thing we put across our chest.
Ash?
Yes, and then we would go out to our assignment, we'd go to our crosswalk. And we'd be there and put out the hands when you couldn't cross. And when it was safe, we'd put our hands down and the kids would cross. And I just think that that would be wonderful to partner with the school district to bring that program back. Do you know, I haven't seen it.
I think you should volunteer. I think you should volunteer if you try to see. You have it down.
Yeah, in a long time, and maybe kids can't do that anymore, I don't know. But it would be wonderful if we could and had it around our various schools. I'm sure at least in going to school and then leaving school, that, those areas around the school would be a lot safer. And we'd be working with the school district, and those kids would get something out of it, too.
Mr. Mayor, they could do that on Visitation as well. During the hours when school lets out, kids coming down from Lippman, leaving BES, there's a whole range of times there. And maybe that visibility would make people think twice. Seeing the kids.
Well, let's see what Complete Streets, you know, brings back to us. And then, you know, the plastic bollard thing. And so I'm just wondering if we just had little plastic strips, not something that's heavy-duty, but if there was a, just a little plastic strip that went down Visitation Avenue, you're not going to go around a double-parked car. You're going to have to stay behind that parked car. And, you know, maybe then you're that person behind that car that's double-parked. Or maybe like Madison, right?
Wailing horn, right? No, that wasn't me. I wasn't wailing my horn.
Right, but you know, that's something that we can do, low-hanging fruit.
I will say that, again, after I got Paul's email, I was going down and in front of the library, on my way out of town, a woman in an SUV dropped off a child and stayed there. And I gave a little tap on the horn, and she stayed there. And I went to go around her, going into traffic, and I said, you should move. And she said, it's easy enough for you to go around me. On the way back into town, there was a parked vehicle double-parked in front of the restaurants. A police officer was standing in front of the restaurant, talking to some people. And there was a car double-parked. I honked the horn. There was no driver in the car. And I sat there until four or five cars got behind me before I realized there was no driver because traffic was coming down. And then I went around. But there was a police officer standing right there, and the person still double-parked. And got out of the car, and.
All right, so in the effort to move along here, and I see Ingrid has a slip. So if there's someone, Ingrid, you can bring it. And just real brief, so we can move on to the other items. Oh, great, okay. Jessica, unmute yourself and give us your question or comment, please.
Hi, everybody. I'm sorry I can't be there. I appreciate all of you for scheduling this time. I just, I just learned about it earlier today from the Mothers of Brisbane. So thank you. First of all, nothing is going to bring back Amy Fernandez. She was cut down, standing outside her car with her four-year-old. Could have been me, could have been any, any parent in Brisbane unloading her child and just struck down by a drunk driver. That was a horrible, horrible, horrible tragedy. And I heard Chief Macias explain, you know, how that was a DUI. It seems like a freak horrible thing that happened. Which it was. What I'd like to raise is that we can slow traffic on Visitation with stop signs at every four intersection, at those four stops, and doing raised pedestrian crosswalks. This is something that happens over, I drive every day to Panorama to pick up a preschooler. And on South Hill Boulevard, they have a stop sign and a raised crosswalk at every major stop. If we had that on Viz, that particular horrific incident couldn't have happened because the truck would have been slowed by each of those four intersections preceding Midtown Market. I think there were three. And just the fact of having four-way stops and a raised crosswalk, you know, it's like a six-inch, whatever, it's like, you know, it's a raised crosswalk. You can see pedestrians, you stop, you go over the hump, you keep going, you stop, you go over the hump. It's just a physical way to slow cars going down Visitation. I mean, I can't even speak to all the parked cars and the double-parks and all that because it's a whole other issue. But I feel like Director Brolton and I have gone around on this multiple times. I know he doesn't like stop signs, but stop signs are there to say, here's where you stop, you wait for people to cross, and then you go. And if they're not stopping, they get cited, and we enforce it. I think stop signs are the most elegant solution that ever existed. So I just wanted to point out that, to my mind, it seems very simple to slow traffic on Viz by doing four stops all the way up, raised crosswalks. Everybody knows this is a pedestrian area, and you have to stop and proceed with caution. One example of how this hasn't worked for me personally, living on Inyo Street, is that I've lived here for over 20 years on Inyo, which is a small side street off of Visitation and Mariposa. And the lack of a stop sign at Visitation and Mariposa means that people will come down Inyo to avoid that non-stopped intersection. And Director Brolton and his team put in those concrete bollards, you might remember, over the last 10 or 15 years, to try to slow the traffic. But people still avoided that intersection, and so they come speeding down Inyo Street. I feel like it's such a simple solution to just make Visitation a very slow, very, you know, car-slowing, pedestrian-oriented strip, a main street strip, by doing the four stops and the raised crosswalks. And I feel like that would solve so many problems. So I just want to raise that. It's been kind of an ongoing thorn in my side. I actually had a conversation with Chief Macias earlier this week about the issues on Inyo Street because of people avoiding the Visitation-Mariposa non-moderated intersection. So, anyway, that's all I wanted to raise. I appreciate you all being here, and thank you for holding this session for us.
Thank you, Jessica. Thank you, Jessica. All right, Daniel Lamb.
Sorry for blaming the point, but I live on Visitation. I have seen the traffic pretty bad. So there's two points to be made here. One is the peak traffic and the second is the safety. In terms of safety, and maybe the Mothers of Brisbane would hate me for saying this, but we might not want to punish the innocent. Thank you for Councilmember Davis to point out to look for the root cause of the recent tragedy. It's because of the DUI, right? And also it happened during the nighttime as well. It seems that something that increased visibility possibly during nighttime to help the situation. But at the same time, I don't think we should punish the normal people driving by. As we know, if we increase stop sign, I think, it was mentioned before, through safety research and such, stop signs might not help. Again, I know some people might hate me for saying that. But yeah, I'm not against it, but maybe worth experimenting. But I just want to point out, you know, try not to punch the innocent from just some bad actors. I know also on Visitation, there's, you know, there's bars and stuff. Just want to avoid, you know, any DUI possible. I don't know how we enforce that. That's just human nature. And yeah, that's something that we just have to do better as a whole. The second thing, the peak parking, I want to ask, this is a long time ago already, but there's some bobout sections of Visitation and also on the cross-sections. I know those additional, it took out maybe eight parking spots. Has there been consideration that maybe allowing for more parking would help the situation there? Yeah, I'm not sure, but just give out some thoughts. And also the library, you know, there's more and more density at the main Visitation side. So of course there's going to be more cars and more cars means more probability of accident. So yeah, I don't know, maybe some ideas to reduce that density. Or just thoughts how to increase parking somewhere else. I know a lot of members in Brisbane would like to be more walkable. I agree as well. But at the same time, there's a lot of like senior people living on hills. You know, walking down from the hill, it's not an option. They have to drive down. So that's, you know, just consider all sides, you know. Yeah, I know it's hard. I agree, safety first. I have a lot of members on, living on Visitation, so it's a very important thing for me too. But yeah, just want to let people to know, you know, consider both sides.
All right. Thank you very much, Daniel. And Jeremy, part of the Complete Streets outreach, they're going to reach out to our businesses on Visitation and get their feedback as well. It won't be just getting information from residents. It's also our businesses too.
Absolutely. And I work with Randy to see various ways that we can engage both the business community and those harder to reach residents too that may not otherwise be able to participate. If I may, Mr. Mayor, I think I've got good sense of the direction tonight, but there were just two things that I wanted to sort of tease out quickly. First, related to the see me flags, I don't think we need to wait for Complete Streets. I think we can begin that process immediately. Secondly, with the council's permission, the chief is comfortable with the continued directive activities that she's doing with her team on Visitation right now. And I'd like to just continue that and see if that has some, that works, that helps.
Yeah, no, I think that's great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ingrid.
We have a raised hand from Michelle Salmon.
Okay, you know, I think we're going to move on. So I'm sorry about that, Michelle, but we're going to move on to item L. So informational update regarding development impact fees. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Mayor Lance, members of the council. Per previous council direction, we're here tonight to provide an update and ask for direction on the four impact fee reports authorized by the council a few years ago. Of the four reports, two are effectively complete or are complete, while two more are in their final stages and we anticipate their completion a little later this year. As discussed in the October 23 staff report, excuse me, as a result of the October 2023 staff report, the city council requested that the four impact fee reports in their affordable housing, parks and rec facilities, traffic and public facilities be brought forward when all four were complete. Staff would like direction as we prepare to bring these reports forward, if that is still the council's wish. Couple of things I wanted to point out, I wanted to note that of the four reports, two were not funded to support what is a typical phase two of such work. Impact fees have two components typically, a nexus phase that requires finding a reasonable relationship, set of reasonable relationship findings. The second is a feasibility study to determine whether any of the studied fees are actually possible to implement. It's not required to conduct a feasibility study to implement such fees, but it's often recommended to ensure that such fees are consistent with current market conditions. So the council may also wish to provide us some guidance tonight on whether the feasibility work should be completed as well. And that typically costs about $30,000 to $50,000. Or if you'd like to utilize another method to move forward, which I think will come up tonight, such as utilizing the work of other communities. Just briefly on the two attachments, attachment three was provided just to give you a sense of what local cities have done in recent years. It may not reflect an apples-to-apples comparison, given the time that they were completed, but it gives you some sense of what has happened around us in recent times. Attachment four is simply an amalgam of some of the completed work and some of the draft that demonstrates some of the various specific fees, understudy, what they could be at their maximum amounts. It's not intended to represent a completed product, but just to give you a sense of the types of amounts you'll be reviewing in the future. Thank you very much.
All right, great. So council questions? Okay, Colin.
This question is for Jeremy. In the staff report, there's a line in here. Oh, let me find it. Four impact fee reports, parks and facilities, affordable housing, traffic and capital facilities, complicated in scope and range, inherently challenging to implement. Could you just tell us why?
The process to adopt fees can be challenging for a variety of reasons. The first is the nature of the fees has a relationship to whether a business can actually develop in town. So I think there needs to be a lot of thoughtfulness associated with what levels the fees are at. Secondly, there are constituencies that have a reluctance to see such fees, including trades, unions and the such. So they will, they will be present. So that is part of a political exercise. It's also very likely that, given the types of fees where they can be assessed on the types of development, that can be a harrowing discussion just related to how much and how little money you want to bring in. And there are certain types of development so that you may simply not want to consider, like residential and the like. So it's not necessarily a very straightforward process. You have to consider a number of factors as you get to that conclusion. I've implemented these types of impact fees in other communities, Campbell and in Palo Alto. And the public sessions can be challenging. So that was the point that I wanted to make there.
Thank you.
Are those from businesses, Jeremy?
Businesses, community members. So for instance, you could assess, you know, fees that have some relationship to development of certain activities that the community would not like to see because they feel like it could keep that development from occurring. But typically, typically it's from trades is where you normally see the most concern. And even in situations, Brisbane is obviously surrounded by communities that have adopted impact fees, but that will not, that's not necessarily a factor in their arguments.
Thanks. All right, Frank? You have any questions?
So I just want to start out by thanking Ingrid. I made a request that we get these impact fees sent to us in an Excel document and I appreciate you guys pulling those together. So my mindset over the past three days was I was going to sit down with Excel and I was going to tap into AI and I was going to really dig into these impact fees. Now I was going to get them categorized and we were going to have a fantastic apples-to-apples comparison tonight. Guess what, folks? Every city has done it differently. Every city defines its impact fees differently. So some say childcare, some call it childcare facilities, some, you know, there's a variety of things here. So while I appreciate all the homework that staff has done by providing the fees of all of our neighboring cities, I don't know that there's a one size that fits all for Brisbane. I think we can tap into this data and we can come up with a solid proposal on what we want to do. But I just don't think it's as easy as just like looking at somebody else and coming in at a more affordable rate. So that's my position on what I've seen here in terms of the data. Jeremy, I appreciate you taking a stab at coming up with what you're calling a draft. I'm calling maybe not a draft, but more of just an example or, you know, a concept, if you will.
That's fair.
Yes. And it was pretty comprehensive, but there's a lot to talk about here. We don't even have definitions for ourselves on many of the fee names here. So I think there's more to discuss. The only other thing that I had, and I wanted to make sure that I understand this correctly. So we do have a little bit of a safety net here and that safety net is if council decides that they're going to implement impact fees, we can undo this as easy as a three-two vote. True statement?
That sounds accurate, but I'm going to defer to our legal representation.
Yes, Frank, you can, provided it's not subject to a previously approved development agreement and has to be revisited with a third party.
Thank you. And my final question is if council decided that at this time, our biggest impact fee on commercial properties and commercial impact fees, could we pursue that only and not currently take residential under consideration and do that at a future point?
Yes.
That's all.
Thank you, Frank. Madison?
I'm just curious, so with feasibility studies, is it one study per, like for affordable housing, right? Like it's a feasibility study for that particular fee? Or is it one feasibility study that covers, like looks at everything holistically?
You can do it both ways. It just depends on which fees you're looking at. And you might find that one fee study isn't, doesn't encompass all of the ones you want to look at. So you need multiple ways to look at it.
Because I could see like a feasibility, if you're just looking at one fee, a study would say feasible. But that could steer you in the wrong direction because then all of a sudden you're like, all of these are feasible. And now you've applied, you know, four new fees, making them collectively all infeasible because they deter, you know, they deter development. And, and so I'm just trying to figure out that the council will have, can have access to information that is actually going to be helpful because it's looking at the whole scope. I, well, I'm not going to give any more. That's just a question.
I should just, if I may, sorry. When you're looking at development fees, you're supposed to also be looking at the development that is leading to these. Some stay on the boats, I understand that. But the nexus is not to what we've been doing the last five years. The nexus is to this thing that's being built now, or was just built or is going to be planned for two years. It's not a nexus over years. It's a nexus to what's going on with development.
Got it. Thank you.
Terry?
I think my comments are more for discussion, not for questions for staff at this moment. I understand that the nexus is really the studies that we need to do to protect ourselves from being targeted by a lawsuit or a complaint to say that the fees are unreasonable or deterring any kind of development.
Correct.
I have a couple of questions. So I just wanted to kind of, kind of go back to your question, Madison. So about the feasibility study. So it's, I guess it would be the council's pleasure to either have a feasibility study for each one, if that's what we choose to do, or we could use the one that we currently have on the books and modify that to be able to apply to the other ones.
Well, yes, but it may, the current one, to give you an example. So the one that's most up to date is the affordable housing one.
Okay.
And there's a half a dozen or so fees that came out of that is to look at. And then the feasibility study, not five of them out. So there's really going to be one that comes out of that. So it just depends on what you're, if each study or each report is looking at the same things, then you could theoretically have one feasibility study. I can't, I'm not able to say tonight that each study is looking at everything. I don't know if there's a member of the team that knows that.
Yeah. Okay, all right, no worries. And then, and you're saying in the staff report that the council could go with feasibility studies for each one, but it could be pretty pricey. Or it could use the impact fees that, from other jurisdictions and come up with a kind of a fairly good guess of what the market is willing to bear. Maybe perhaps we do something that could be less. Is that's an option?
That is an option. The risk, I think, is what's been shared tonight is just associated with whether those numbers are actually viable, given if the market conditions have significantly changed. I think it's reasonable to assume that if another city is utilizing them, that they generally work. But even though we're adjacent to South City, we might have a little different types of development here. And this is pure speculation on my part. If the conditions have changed in a way based on anything that's happening right now, there very well would be conversations between the development community and the city about modifying those. So, yeah.
Got it.
But the bottom line is you could.
You could. Okay, all right. And so to prepare all this information, we hired a consultant to work with staff to come up with the numbers. And so we've, how far into the consultant contract have we gone? Have we already paid the consultants? And if so, how much have we paid the consultants for these four impact fee studies?
I think we're all going to look at each other here for a second to see if someone has the best information. Noreen?
So the city has used multiple consultants for the various studies. We've used one consultant, NBS, for the Parks and Recreation Facility Study as well as the Public Facility Study. So that's the same consultant. They've been fully paid for completion of the parks one and they are nearing completion for the public facilities. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I believe their contracts were in the range of $25,000 to $30,000 for each study.
Got it, got it. So we've already paid that amount. So it makes sense, obviously. And we've given you direction. I mean, and that's going off the memory of just reading the staff reports. We have given direction to move forward with impact fees. But now we're at a point where we're trying to set the fees. Is that our fair assessment that we're at this stage now to give direction on like how we set the fees?
No, the next step would be bringing those reports forward. So on their completion. So I think the first thing we're looking for tonight is whether the council wishes to see all those at the same time. And they're anticipated to be completed from a nexus study standpoint fairly soon. Or if you'd like to see those as they're completed, then we can bring those forward. But they may not have a nexus associated with them to do, excuse me, a feasibility.
We all have nexus.
They all have nexus. Thank you. Two feasibility, two don't.
Okay, got it, got it, got it. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question. Looking at the spreadsheet that we were given, various cities in the peninsula, and it's really interesting. Thank you, Councilmember Kern, pointing out that some of the titles are so ambiguous. But with interest, I saw that one city has a park land acquisition fee. So maybe this is a question for legal. Brisbane, which has a lot of water and a mountain and not as much land area, so that when we talk about affordable housing, typically we conjure up images of a structure. But we don't always have property to put housing on and that becomes a challenge. Would it be legal in fact to have an impact fee that would be for future housing? So it would be an acquisition fund to acquire land for affordable housing? Or could that generically be included under the title of affordable housing?
I don't know with certainty. I don't think there's a problem with the category. I don't know, I don't want to say exactly how it would have to be labeled, but I am aware of cities that have done special funds that way, and I think some of them have to be impact fees. I'd have to do more research, but I think you can. It's just how you do it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so any other council questions? All right, let's open it up to the public. So any members of the public who would like to speak on this matter? Okay, anybody at home? Okay, so council discussion. Terry, you seem like you're ready.
I have some questions about this. Typically, in Brisbane, our larger developments that are commercial have had a development agreement. And a development agreement is something that we don't need impact fees for because we wrap that development agreement and put those impact fees as such, the community benefits, however you want to put it, into that development agreement so that we're assured of getting it and that there's, it can be different depending on whatever that project is and what kind of impacts it's likely to have. And we had a subcommittee meeting with a developer, with Cliff and I, a few months back. And the discussion was, well, are South City, South San Francisco's impact fees making it where you don't want to build there anymore? And this is a developer that had thoughts about a project here and thought, and has done projects in South San Francisco. And the developer alluded that their impact fees are enough that it makes them want to find somewhere else to develop rather than develop in South San Francisco. And so how are we hogtied by a developer agreement if we already have the impact fees in place? Or does one override the other? And I'm not sure if that's for legal or for staff.
Oh, that feels like a legal question to me.
Yeah, thanks, Jeremy. I knew that was coming. So this goes back to what I said to Councilmember Kern and his response. If you have development plans in the city and you're tying the impact fees to those, you have the study, establish the nexus, there's a reasonable amount of money being raised, all of that, you can continue regardless of whether you put, try to put some special part of that into a development agreement. A development agreement is negotiating other things. So you don't have to tie development, these fees, impact fees, into a development agreement. The reason I said what I said to Councilmember Kern is you do have some cities that do that because they want continuity of the fees, so they put it in the development agreement. And what that means is two things. The developer has a basis to sue you 10 years later because you have too much money from their fee, but also it means that they have the protection of that contract. So development agreement, in what you agree on, separate from impact fees? The only time the two have to, can become a problem is when a city tries to build in sort of a continuity of the fee over time by putting it into a development agreement rather than just having it separate.
But, but it would be a way, instead of, instead of impact fees on a commercial project, you can just require a development agreement?
Yes, absolutely.
And obtain those same results without having the, the impact fee that is on the books for every development, some which you may want and some which may, you may not. Some may have more impacts to the city and some may have less, depending on what that project is. So a development agreement can be more creative, if you, so to speak, and tailored towards a specific business and whether, what its impacts are going to be compared to what a put-in-writing development agreement is.
Right, that's exactly right. The fee stays in place, whatever the contract says, the developer's agreed to, that is what governs that fee. It's not an impact fee, it's just something you've agreed to as part of a development. So yes, you can do that that way, and you don't have to put a fee, an impact fee relative to that specific development on the books for the next 20 years. You can do it by agreement.
Okay. So back to sort of discussion. In the attachment of the draft DIF summary on page 71, we have put impact fees different for hotel rooms on the Baylands versus hotel rooms in Sierra Point. And I know this is just a draft for ideas, but why would that be?
I'm sorry to point to you, Noreen. Do you recall?
That was for the transportation one. I don't know why they did that as part of that study.
But one would assume with the hotel, I mean, I'm not sure if it's, this is, this is for transportation because the interchange to access Sierra Point is going to be so much more money than the impact of putting 101 candlestick in?
I'm sorry, man, I'm just drifting into this. So this is regarding the Transportation Impact Fund that's proposed out there, and your question is regarding why it would be imposed at the Hotel at Sierra Point, is that?
Well, no, there's a rate of $3,433 per room for Baylands Hotels.
Yes.
And $7,000 for a Sierra Point Hotel.
So I don't know why it's different, but it's applied there because the entire Baylands development, one of the many intersection and transportation improvements, is the US 101 north and southbound off-ramp into Brisbane at Lagoon Way and then on. So that is envisioned right now to be reconfigured as a roundabout. So that's why it's being applied to those places out at Sierra Point. How they came up with that particular allocation of dollars, I do not know.
Okay.
It looks like Staff Member John Shrekey wants to also answer the question, perhaps?
Okay. We didn't even know he was here.
Oh, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I believe the fee difference is based on proximity to transit in the Baylands Hotels being in proximity to the Caltrain Station. Some of those transportation impacts trips that they use to determine the fee would be muted as compared to sites out at Sierra Point. That's my belief of why the fee difference partially comes from.
Okay. Well, I didn't, I don't want to delve into this, you know, we're not going into the actual fees in this. So I'll reserve any further questions.
Thank you for that. You know, I think that you brought up, made me think of a question. So if you wouldn't mind, so Jeremy, I know in the staff report, the public art ordinance is not an impact fee, but it is applied to developers 1% of construction cost. So kind of, you know, tell us the difference between this public art ordinance compared to an impact fee or maybe, Noreen, or?
I'm going to refer to legal.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks again.
Okay.
So this one's controversial, up and down. I'll keep it as simple as I can. Public art fees were brought into the mainstream through development agreements. Cities began to, this is a gross over-sophistication, but it's accurate. Cities began to see them as for the good of the city regardless of new development. But nonetheless, if there was new development and we taxed 1% or whatever for all that, then there'd be a fund so we could have public art wherever we want it. So it was not ever done as a, it was done as a development fee, and it was done by ordinance. It's not done as an impact fee. Some cities that did it by impact fee are at risk of facing lawsuits and have it challenged, and some decisions have tossed them out because there is no relation to the, the development coming in. There's something you're supposed to have an access to, and there's something you're supposed to be mitigating, if you will. Public art tends not to do that, so they declare the impact fee illegal. Then what cities do is they go back and they put the fee on the books as a police power, if you will, something you believe is in best interest of the city. And I'm not aware of any cities lost lawsuit over that. The law's the numbers relatively minor. But it comes out of development agreements, it's now by ordinance, it's not unique to Brisbane. The ones that get challenged are ones that's done as an impact fee.
Okay, so no, that was really great to clarify, Tom. And so then, so, so it's an ordinance, it's not an impact fee, but it, is it technically, or technically, not the right word, but is it kind of applied the same way?
It's a city, no, that, you mean applied the same way because you're?
It's you with an impact fee, right? So you, yeah, you have a, you know, it is, okay, all right. That's what I was trying to get at. So then, so then, then the question is like, okay, well, so we, we have something in place. I mean, it's not an impact fee, but it's, it's applied like an impact fee. So at least we have something that we can work off of here. So Carolina, how long have we had this public art ordinance in place? And how much money approximately has it brought in for the city regarding the developments that have occurred over that time span? Maybe Madison, you probably know.
I, if I may. You have like 3 million? I, I think it's been in place for about a decade. Yeah. And we currently have just over, I believe, $3 million in the public art fund.
Okay, so we've collected $3 million?
Well, that's what we have right now.
Oh, so we've collected more than?
Yeah.
Okay.
We spent some.
Over a 10-year period? And, sorry, you know, I'm just throwing this thing out there to you. Or maybe Jeremy might be able to answer, or maybe John. So were there any major developments that occurred in Brisbane that, that kicked in a significant amount of money to this? Or is it just kind of trickle in here and there, and it just kind of just all added up because we had that ordinance in place?
Well, keep in mind, oh, go ahead, sorry. Go ahead.
The Sierra Point projects came, were permitted under the ordinance. They did generate some substantial funds.
Keep in mind, oh, sorry, I didn't know John was done.
Okay.
That, that their projects required them, like Phase 3, right? Their, their project required them to contribute to the fund or to use that budget and build something. So they chose to hire an artist, and they spent more than what was required by them. But that money never came into our fund.
Okay.
Into the city's fund. So it's like, it's public, it's generated the art itself, but it hasn't generated money into the fund because of the way that, that developers can choose.
For Phase 3, yeah, yeah.
Yes, and a lot of ones that were major chose to do, Sangamo was one that did $200,000, and they initially chose to make their, to do their own art project, and then with some internal stuff, ended up deciding to just put that $200,000 into the fund and not move forward with their piece.
Okay.
So.
So, you know, just, so what I'm trying to get at here is that, you know, there could be development that contributes, and we don't have a development agreement with them because the projects are smaller. But they've, you know, so we have this, you know, this ordinance that has generated $4 million, and, and the biggest development, Phase 3, didn't even give us any money. They did their own thing, or maybe they gave some, but for the most part, it's, it's come from development over the last 10 years. Does that, does that seem right?
Well, I think Sangamo, right, that's like a perfect example of they didn't really, I don't think they had a development agreement. It was tenant improvements, and it triggered, they did a certain amount, over 5 million or something in tenant improvements, and that amount of construction triggered. So there was no way to nego, like, you know, you wouldn't negotiate a community benefit in that type of situation. But because that ordinance is in place, we were still able to extract money for art. And so that, that is the best example of what you're talking about, I think.
So Sangamo is, Sangamo?
I don't know how you pronounce it.
Sangamo, okay. So let's use them as an example, right? So say they had, say we had the Affordable Housing Impact Fee, and the Sangamo project came along, and there's no development agreement because they're just doing a remodel. Would we get money from that for the Affordable Housing Impact Fee? Or that, that wouldn't come in?
If there was no, if there was no impact fees in place?
Say there was an impact fee, and they, they did their remodel. Would that, so we received money for the public art ordinance? And if we hadn't a Affordable Housing Impact Fee, would we have received money from, from that particular project?
Yes.
It would depend if it, how the, the impact fee was written, if we could even do a nexus for a remodel.
Okay, yeah, no, you're right, there has to be the nexus. No, okay, no, that's why we're having the discussion, right? It's kind of, you know, understand how we, what applies, you know? And some, some particular projects will apply because they bring in a bunch of jobs. And, and maybe one could say the remodel brought in more jobs than what was currently existing at that structure too, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Are you trying to ask whether impact fees apply to projects that don't have development agreements?
Yeah, well, just, yeah, that sounds like a good question.
Yes.
It just depends on the terms of the, who's, what's triggered under the impact fee? What kind of actions triggers it? And if it's just an ordinance, what has to happen to trigger paying that fee? So you're just looking at the, the terms and conditions that lead to somebody having to pay the fee.
I think the key here is that, depending on how it's written, you can collect money for things that benefit the community without necessarily being reliant on new construction, without being reliant on something like the quarry or, you know, a hotel at Sierra Point, or the Baylands finally happening, or whatever. All this new, new, new stuff. You have a way to generate community benefit funds, essentially. And, you know, they're going into certain, certain buckets. But you can, you can get that, and you may be able to get that from the same site over and over and over and over again, even though the footprint is not changing, but because of whatever is occurring on that site is triggering that. And that's, in my mind, I think, why we, why there will continue to be public art funds. And it will continue to replenish is because, you know, it's not, oh, we have just a little bit of land left to figure out how to plan for and develop. And once that's done, then that's it. There's not more streams of revenue coming in, and then a council feeling pressured to have to approve all kinds of new development because we want to get money for this and that. So just something to consider.
I have, I have one more question.
Yeah.
And, and this is probably legal. So let's say you have a developer builds a new building, or let's say they refurbished one, but it's empty. And let's say it's subdivided into three tenants. Can impact fees be based upon? Can impact fees be based upon square footage, employees, criteria that would be a less ease obligation rather than building owner slash developer? It's, it's like an occupancy fee because I'm thinking of the, the impacts of, to transit or to amenities on a city are often based upon the density of the occupants. An office building has a lot of people, a laboratory might have two people per thousand square feet, the use, thank you, yeah.
So that, you just answered the question quite well. You could be a lawyer. If the impact's greater, density's greater, yeah, you can tie it to that kind of thing. Anything that helps you make the nexus rational helps defend the impact fee.
So this supports Councilmember Davis's hypothesis that doesn't have to be tied to new construction, can be tied to, tied to use.
Tenant improvements.
Right.
Yeah, I, I don't know that you can say employing 1,000 people triggers an impact fee, but you can say that we're going to build this thing and there's going to be a density of 30,000 people on the first five floors. That could be tied to one fee because that's a huge number for the town. But there's a lab on floors four to six and that's going to employ 500 people. Even if you had it based on density, you wouldn't collect much for the 500 people. So I don't know if people just, I don't know if it's in place for the whole building, but the only way you actually collect a lot is for the really, where the great density is in the building or if you can tier it depending on what's in the building. I think you'd have to do it based on density, period, not specific use. And then, as you said, and then it just sort of fulfills itself based on how they use it.
One thing that came up during our Affordable Housing Subcommittee because we were talking about impact fees there and there's a struggle to note, like, this might not even be feasible. But Cliff and I were talking about how at Sierra Point, right, you have all of these high-paying jobs coming in. So some is about like density, which would affect transit. But in, in biotech, right, these salaries are such, they're so high that they're then bringing all of these people to Brisbane. They're coming here, they're of course falling in love with us. They want to move here. And what does that do? It makes it more difficult for people who are, you know, low income to then afford the very few rental units that are available because there is now an influx of all these high-paying jobs. People want to live close to work so they don't have to commute and therefore it drives rents up. Or there, those people are then buying all, buying starter homes and it becomes then more difficult for people who maybe have grown up here, lived here their whole life, want to continue living in the community, but can't compete with a biotech salary. That, that applies such pressure. And so like if we, if there was a way to look at overall payroll or average, you know, how much there, what the, if we could look at payroll tax or something that we could show, you're bringing all these high-paying jobs, which is great, but it's creating a very real problem in terms of affordability because there's just, we're not building housing fast enough. And so you have that supply and demand issue there and that's not going away anytime soon. So, you know, there is a way to also look at it from a different perspective, not just on how many people are working, but how much are they actually getting paid?
So Frank, you have anything you want to add to the conversation?
I don't know that I have something to immediately add to the conversation, but I do have a question to staff. Have, I guess, a question to council as well. Have we ever had anyone say to us directly, "I chose Brisbane because you don't have impact fees"?
Oh, I'm sure.
The city had, I may be the only one who knows this one. The city with the two extended stay hotels at Sierra Point, the city's had a couple disputes, which are all resolved now. But in those discussions involving, I think, three different owners total over time, that's what they always bring up. Had I known that this was going to put me in an anti-competitive position, we never would have come here and we're not going to stay because we're now in an anti-competitive position. Now, those hotels have changed ownership, they haven't changed franchise, they haven't changed, the rates have not gone up exceedingly, that kind of thing. So you don't see a lot of indication that, that they're really going to leave. What you see is, is sales of the properties. That's the only time that, I've been working with the city on offer about a decade and that's the only time that I've, I've come across.
Thank you.
And that was almost the reverse of what you're asking, whether people came here because we didn't have fees or a property was tied to certain fees. And in that case, the property was tied to fees that the owner, the new purchaser didn't realize was part of the development agreement that those properties had, but they weren't necessarily impact fees. We have had developers in our subcommittee talk to us about that we are more competitive because we have less impact fees. Now, those are developers that would probably be subject to a development agreement if their project is to go forward. And that may or may not make it where it's feasible for them at this time. Also, when we originally with Health Peak, Health Peak, we had a development agreement and that got postponed for many years and had to be extended. And that was again, another negotiation with that current development agreement, whether they wanted to extend it. And by law, we have to do a certain amount of extension, I believe, with a development agreement. But it was interesting to see that just because you get a development agreement or there's impact fees in place, if that project gets stalled for economic reasons or for whatever reason, you're not going to get that money for maybe 10 or 15 years down the road. So even with a development agreement or impact fees, it's not a surefire way of having immediate money to take care of immediate needs that are going on. So I know we're talking about impact fees, but I know that originally when we had a business that wanted to relocate here and they were sort of playing us against San Francisco for a headquarters or for development, one of the things that they brought up was the lack of employee taxes.
Payroll tax.
Payroll tax, employee tax or payroll tax. And some cities have done a per person tax and some have done it on payroll, which certainly makes more sense whether you're employing 20 minimum wage employees or 20 half a million a year. What kind of weight, what that can bring in. And they were, they, they sort of implied that they were leaving San Francisco because they had high payroll tax or employee tax. And then San Francisco made a deal with them to waive it.
I know exactly who you're talking about.
It sort of backfired for San Francisco in the long run.
Yes.
But, you know, that's, that's another story. But, so is that something we've looked at is, because a tax, we have a different way we apply it. We have to put it through the, the system of applying a tax and it's different than applying an impact fee. So is that something that we've also considered versus impact fee that would be an ongoing revenue stream rather than just with development?
We're looking, we're looking at this through a business license study. And when are we anticipating starting that? May? Yeah, so we'll be looking at possibilities within our business license structure.
Frank?
Jeremy, again, thanks so much for putting together the summary. Sorry, you were just about to get up, I apologize.
No, no, not at all.
So in the summary that you put together, the, the document you gave us to think about this, you've got 11 different fees in here. And I don't think you're recommending that we have 11 different fees. Maybe you are, I don't know. And under the fee section here, I think you, these are what you're calling the maximum fees?
Sorry, Frank, where are you in the report?
I'm on page 71.
Thank you.
So in my thinking here, if these are the maximum fees and we implemented some small percentage of these, it's probably better to have fees than not to have some fees, right? You know, how would we narrow this down? I think that 11 fees is quite a few and a lot to manage for a city. And then I look at like a San Mateo, which is a booming metropolis compared to the size of Brisbane and they've only got, what, six, five or six here? I mean, is there something, there's, is there low hanging fruit, something that makes easy sense here that's easy to track, easy to implement? We don't go for the maximum fee, we go for something significantly less that allows us to remain very competitive in the marketplace?
I, I think it depends, through the chair, I think it depends in part what you're looking to collect fees for.
Personally.
Oh, if, Frank.
Well, I mean, we're looking to collect fees for park and recreation, affordable housing, traffic and public facilities. That's, I think, what we've already narrowed it down to.
I'm sorry then, I misunderstood your question, I apologize, Frank.
I'm saying in, in the document that you provided is the, to ideate on, to talk through here, we've got 11 different fees. And I know that you just went out to neighboring communities and you're like, hey, this is examples of what other people have. But we should be able to narrow this down to just a few that would support parks and recreation, affordable housing, traffic and public facilities.
Yes, I don't think that there's a magic bullet here, right? I, I don't think that there's something that I would advise from an, an objective standpoint. I think that this is somewhat of a subjective exercise. That's how I've approached it in other communities.
This wasn't a personal attack on the work you were doing, I'm just, I'm just trying to, to make a simpler conversation.
Well, I think it's, I, we, I, I went back and forth including this and I didn't want to create any confusion and the intention here was just to have very light touch. And I apologize that we probably spent more time than is necessary in this, in this piece of it, but yeah.
Madison, do you have?
I just, I think we should get back to like what staff is looking for from us tonight, which is, do you want to see all the studies at once? Do you want to evaluate them as they're done? What do you feel about the fact that some of them don't have feasibility components to them? And I, I don't think we can get in a position tonight, we're in a position tonight to really evaluate any fees without seeing the reports. So I personally, to answer that question, am in favor of looking at everything holistically. I would like to look at all the reports together to then be able to make some kind of determination. I would like for feasibility study to be included, especially as Frank mentioned, you know, if you're relying on other cities, they're slicing and dicing it all up different ways, there's no uniformity. I think we're different than other cities. There's stuff that makes us attractive, there's stuff that makes us not that attractive. And I would like to, you know, have some type of feasibility study that looks at the whole picture and not just per fee. I don't know, some of them already have feasibility studies done, so I don't know, you know, might be too late for that. But that's what would make it easy for me to make a decision on this.
So if I may, you know, I spoke with, with Michael and Jeremy, I had some questions. You're really kind of getting at to what, what you're saying. And basically, do we need the feasibility study or not? Because they are expensive. And is there a way for us to move forward with looking at the other cities, basically South City, and coming in with, as you're suggesting, Frank, at a lower rate? Because in the staff report, that's one of the options that we can do is as, to address feasibility, is to look at what's going on in other cities. Granted, South San Francisco is different, it's a lot bigger. But our major development that we would have in Brisbane is similar to what's at Oyster Point. So whether it's a million square feet at Sierra Point or a million square feet at Oyster Point, it's going to be the same. So we can give direction to staff to move forward with the four and use what is currently in the marketplace, say in South San Francisco as a benchmark, but come in lower so that then the process can move forward and then staff can bring it back to us for the final decision. We don't have to agree, but at least we'll have all that information before us and staff will have gotten us the information that, that, that we're looking for. Would that be a reasonable approach?
Right, I think that's accurate to what was conveyed to the conversation with Michael. Yes.
Okay, so that allows us to move forward.
Well, that's a valiant effort and I think that that allows us to move forward. I can't say at this moment whether staff's making some suggestions of fees that they are throwing out because they're looking at South City at this moment in time without even looking at the fees, can I say that that's, that I agree that that's the approach that we should take? I think it's a good starting place, you could suggest some things, they could be lower, great, but it's hard to say that that is even appropriate at this point without even looking at the studies themselves, just the regular studies.
So we have the nexus studies, so we know that we can do it, right? We've made that, that connection. So then in regards to feasibility, we could pay the money and we'd probably come out with the same outcome, potentially. Or we could use what currently exists in the marketplace and have staff do additional analysis to see if, if the marketplace is still, you know, what South City has done is valid. And, and that would be helpful for us so that then we have a really grounded position to say, yes, let's, let's implement. Because we're, we're still not at the implement stage as, as the city manager has said. So this just gives us an opportunity to move forward. And, and that's, that's, you know, that is the direction that we have given in the past.
So, so with the, the illustration you've given us, it's what's happened out at Oyster Point is what's going to happen out at Sierra Point in theory and that we could tailor our impact fees against what they've done to move forward. But that entire area will be handled under a development agreement. And so will that mean that whatever fees we put in place as impact fees for that, for the city, and that would apply to the Baylands, then that's going to tie our hands with how we approach a development agreement where we're going to be asking for amenities? Because we've already got these impact fees that are going to apply, they're the blanket. And then we're going to try to do a development agreement on top of that where that could either limit what our development agreement could be and the things we ask for, because then it would make it infeasible and without a nexus study, we wouldn't know and that could open us up for legal issues if we try to do a development agreement on top of the impact fees. I, I think is what I heard Tom say, that that could put us in that, in jeopardy for that. I, I could have misinterpreted, but I think we need to look at the studies side by side and decide what is feasible for us. And I don't think we should put all our hopes in one basket of something happening in the Baylands when we have impacts that are going to be happening here in town with people taking their little one-bedroom house and making it into a 5,000 square foot house and, you know, more. it into a 5,000-square-foot house, and, you know, more intergenerational fam, you know, larger homes, larger impacts to what people can afford to buy here, because there won't be the little homes. And so, I think that we need to look at it more holistically than just taking South City's model and applying it because it's gonna cover the Baylands. Baylands is gonna be covered with a development agreement.
Yeah, and O点儿 Point ones will be covered with a development agreement, too. You know, in South San Francisco, granted, I'm not a South City council member, but they have development agreements and they have impact fees, right? You can't, it isn't that it's just one or the other, they have one that it's, you don't have to negotiate anymore. And so, if we want to build affordable housing, and we were in those subcommittee meetings, the recommendation from the consultant was to move forward with the impact fee so that we can generate more money for affordable housing. And then, the one for the park facilities and the trails and the open space, okay, we know that we need some money for that, and if there are impacts that these developments have on our city, then this is a way for them to mitigate those impacts. So, and again, this is something that we've already given staff direction on, and we've paid the consultants $140,000. I think that we should at least move forward with something that is modest, and that as we move along and we can see whether or not these impact fees are, you know, putting a wet blanket over development, okay, well, then maybe we reduce it, or we get rid of them, or maybe things go like gangbusters and we realize that, okay, we could actually get a little bit more, and we increase our impact fees. But these are the four that we feel that are important, and we should move these forward.
Then I think we should do it with studies. I don't think we should just blanket them.
Well, the city attorney, or one of our city attorneys, said that that's an option that we can do, and if it gets us to the same place, then why spend the money? We, I know we have another item on our agenda, and I'm gonna try and get us there, you know, we might have to extend the time, but we know that our finances are not in the place that we'd like them to be, and spending that additional money when we really don't need to? Yeah, is that prudent? We can give staff direction, and they can come back to us with a product, and then we can decide, once we get that final product. It's really just giving staff the direction so that they can give us something. That's all we're asking.
Are you just, I feel like my packet is deficient, actually, now that we're talking more about this. Do you all have an attachment four to this?
Attachment four is the draft DIF summary.
Oh, 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 oh. It just looks like...
It's the one in landscape.
I see, I see.
It's landscape.
I see, I see.
It's just different printing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Different formatting.
May I make a comment, Mr. Mayor? I'd just like to weigh in. I understand all the points of view, they're all really, it's just a good discussion. I can understand, Mr. Mayor, where you're coming from, but when I read about the four reports being done, one is complete, three are close, and traffic and public facilities completion mid-spring, and we have parks and rec finalizing. So, we have one done, one that's almost done, and two that are very close. Is there a harm in waiting for the completion of all four? Mid-spring, we're already in March now, so another month or two. When I look at the draft, and Councilmember Kern pointed it out very aptly, where we have all these categories, so if we went to, South City has a lot of categories, I see the benefit of seeing all of these studies without feasibility, I mean, reports, without the feasibility studies, simply for us to say, what fees do we want for what? We don't even know. And if we're partnering off South City, they have needs, we may have different needs.
Yes.
So, without seeing the report, we don't know, we're just guessing, we're going off what someone else did. And the fact that these reports are due so close, I could see what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, that we could dovetail off, but I think on some, we may say, we could look at all four reports and go, we don't need a feasibility study.
Yes.
Or, we're not gonna do all of these, so maybe we only need two feasibility studies, not four. But we don't have that information yet. So, could we wait a month or two, hopeful that these reports will be completed? And I think that might mediate all of the different opinions here.
You may also say that impact fees aren't, like, there's many ways to skin a cat, right? Like, we just talked today about how public art is not an impact fee, and yet it's structured so well, it's the gift that keeps on giving. Affordable housing, funding affordable housing, it might not be, it may not be best to be structured as an impact fee, it might be better to do something connected with payroll, like we've been talking about. So, you know, or, or like how public art is connected specifically to just construction costs. So, it may not be new, it may not always be new development, it could be, I think that there, yes, we pay the money, but the thing is, as you have these conversations, as you're talking, it brings up other ideas, and so, we may implement impact fees in some way, but we also may say, hey, I think it's better to structure it as a tax or some other kind of ordinance or something, that we could extract this money. And I think it's worth having that conversation about how is it best to generate the revenue that we want.
So, I have a question for staff. So, is, what is missing to complete perhaps what Councilmember Macken is asking? Is it the feasibility study? Is that the thing that you're missing, or is something else that still needs to be completed with, without, or separate from the feasibility study?
No, the, the two studies that are, the one study that's complete included a feasibility study, so that's done. There's a second study that's very, very close, we're just updating some figures, that does not include a feasibility study. Then you've got two other ones that were completing them, completing the nexus studies, and that's what should be done in the next, you know, into mid-spring, and they don't include feasibility studies. So, to the point that I, that I think I hear in the conversation here, maybe I'm pointing to the mayor pro tem, the, we're a couple months out from the four nexus studies complete that will give you the maximum fees that are possible, and then there could be a subsequent analysis associated with, at that point.
Okay, all right, okay, so, maybe to your point, then? Or, Frank, you had something you want to say?
Yeah, just a question, Jeremy. So, when you bring these studies forward to council, you're gonna be addressing in some sort of quantitative way the questions of need, benefit, and proportionality that we're gonna be able to understand and make some judgment on. Is that a true statement?
It's a very true statement. And it's very involved, and it goes through multiple steps to get you to what a maximum fee looks like, and then if there's a feasibility study attached, then there's five or six additional steps there, but it's very logical to follow, you can understand what they're deriving the numbers from and how they get to the conclusions.
You're gonna show your work.
Okay, so...
Show their work.
Yeah, 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 okay. So, Jeremy, so then what you're saying is that you can bring back to the council, hopefully maybe in a couple of months or something like that, end products, but without the feasibility study?
On some.
Correct.
We know we have one that's already completed, the affordable housing one, and I'm assuming that the park one is probably the feasibility study, we've already, or we have not, okay, so we just have just the one, and we'd have pretty much complete impact fees on, so, three of them would just be missing, the feasibility study.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
They don't tell you what the maximum is, if they don't even know if it's feasible. They're just saying, based on, like, how does that, how do you derive a number?
The need.
Whoever's, I heard need, yes.
Okay, so, okay, so, in the, you know, just trying to move things along here, so, Jeremy, do you, so, as a council, do we, I think we've given staff direction, move forward, get us the information that we need minus the feasibility study, and then so that we can analyze the final numbers?
I saw mostly nods, is there...
Yeah.
Is that good? All right.
I said a long time ago.
Thank you. Okay. All right, how about this? Does anybody want to take a break?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, are we gonna take it for public? We're taking a five-minute break, a 10-minute break? What's the...
We're taking a seven-minute break.
Okay.
Turn off the... I need some tips. Now's the time to have some free lunch.
I have a mic, Trump.[1236.26]
I need some tips. Now's the time to have some free lunch.
I have a mic throne.
To item and receive the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget review report. Carolina, please.
Good evening. So we wanted to warn you that it's at least 20 minutes or so.
That's all right.
If we want to.
Is this a happen, have to happen tonight thing? I'm so sorry, Carolina. I know you waited all the way until right now.
Okay, anyway.
No, no one will die if it doesn't happen tonight, although we would prioritize this at our next meeting.
Or I can.
Is there a way to cut it shorter, Carolina? That would be great. If we could do that, I know that Jeremy would.
Well, alternatively through the chair, if there are questions that you have based on them, based on what you see in front of you, we can answer those as well. There are, I think that the presentation is excellent and there's a lot of really good data in it. So obviously I'd like to support that.
Okay, so how about this, Jeremy? We could move this part of the meeting to our next meeting and then we would be able to see the whole presentation. Or i- if it's more important to you, we can get a shortened version and we can get the information, ask questions and knock it out tonight.
If the council is so inclined, I wouldn't mind doing a brief presentation this evening. Answer any burning questions and then we can continue the item if you'd like.
Oh, great. Okay, Carolina.
Okay.
You're on the spot.
We're gonna hit the highlights.
Yes, this, yeah.
The overarching message here.
Because this is an overview, right? We're not making any decisions tonight.
An update.
Just an update, just an update.
Just an update. No, uh, no requests, no decisions, just an update.
Info.
Yes. So, uh, just, just for the benefit of the, of the viewers and wanted to first, let's review the conditions of the budget when it was prepared. And we're talking fiscal year 2425. Prepared in spring 2024, approved in June. The, uh, although COVID was behind us at that time, we were still experiencing economic impact from the Fed rate increases and fuel costs causing pricing issues. Uh, we also had some timing issues for, uh, that were still unknown regarding reimbursements for storm repairs. The revenues that we were budgeting at the time, we set back to baselines excluding any previous year spikes. And, um, there were some challenges in keeping the expenses below the expected revenue because at the time we were facing the significant salary raise for the MOUs with, it was a 3-3. This was the first year of a 6% increase. Um, so.
That was when?
That was in, uh, July 24.
Okay.
Yeah. So in anticipation of that, uh, we knew we were going to be spending into our fund balance. So, next. So overarching message here, um, if you take anything away from this is we went in the budget knowing that we were going to have to use fund balance. Revenues in the city are limited, they're flat. In the sense of not a whole lot of room for growth at this time. But we knew that our expenses were growing faster than our revenues. So with that, we had a 2.9, um, I'm sorry, 2.7 deficit budgeted. So at mid-year, we're looking through, actually through January of 31st of this year. Uh, we're anticipating that our revenues are actually going to exceed the budget that we had. That's 29.3 mil. And then our expenditures, we were actually able to, um, bring some down. Because at the time, if you recall, when we, uh, approved the budget, we had anticipated, uh, about finding $466,000 of savings that we were going to try to either, you know, do that by pushing into 2026 fiscal year or just delay some of that funding. So we were able to, to find savings with that plus with headcount and some other areas um, that we'll go through later, but, um, so now our expenditures are actually less than what we budgeted. And so the combination of the, of the two, we dropped that 2.7 million deficit down to 1.4 million. So, um, moving to the next slide. We're going into the revenue. Just this is, these are major categories of what we're seeing. Okay, so again, we're not asking for any adjustments at this time, but we do want to highlight that we did see overall an increase in revenue. Some of the major categories for property tax you'll see up. Mostly be, some of these are from, uh, the additional property taxes that we're seeing from some of the RDA properties out in Sierra Point. And then the state released some funds, which it's not always known if you're gonna get, it's always dependent on their budget. So we did see some excess from them payments promised by this year. So with all of that, the property taxes are going up. Now, sales taxes, we're keeping our eye out on the use tax because that's the newer one. Unfortunately, we had budgeted 2 million and we're only seeing about 1.5. And that's gonna, we're, we're, it's really new. So with each year that goes by, we'll have a better idea if we're, what our baseline should be. So within the sales tax overall, it's going down because of the use tax. However, our sales tax in general, it remains pretty strong. It's about flat. We remain about 3% of the county pool. So we could rely that that's going to be a steady, uh, flow. The next line, TOTs, steady, we're, I'll do a separate slide on that. Business licenses are up. We have a full year of HDL. So we were talking about we're going to be looking at a business license study. But for now, the increase primarily is because of recology that when we budgeted, it was before we were actually able to calculate what their fee would be. And so, um, it was ahead of, of what we budgeted.
Can I ask, what is HDL?
That's the name of the business license administrator that we're using.
Okay, thank you. It was an acronym I didn't understand.
It's also cholesterol.
Okay, so then fees and charges is the, is the other area. Park and rec fees are going, um, strong. They're ahead of what we're, of what we've seen in previous year. However, permitting fees are lagging a little bit. So we're, we don't want to, um, we can't, it's hard to project permitting because it really depends on when people are going to do their activity, what, you know, whatever, um, projects they have. So, but in any event, we are comparing it to previous years. And so we're a little slow on that, so that's why you're going to see the, uh, the decrease. Moving to the TOT, the next slide. This is something that we wanted everyone to, uh, as we've been reviewing the TOT over the years, especially since COVID where there was a huge drop. We don't think, uh, based off of the information that we're seeing, based off of the activity in San Francisco, which drove a lot of the activity here, that we are going to be, uh, that we're looking at 1.9 as being our new baseline. That's basically what we're seeing. Yeah. And so we are seeing an uptick. This is not including the short-term rentals, but however, um, you know, it, it's a, now we're, we're seeing that we're about where we're gonna be. Without any changes in San Francisco, right? Okay, moving on to 20, uh, to the expenses. So again, no adjustments that we're requesting. So the major ways we were able to, uh, increase the savings or decrease our expenses projected were delayed hiring. So there are some significant, um, positions that were outlined in the report, um, including an IT systems administrator historian, um, that will not be, um, filled before July or at least not expected to. And then, um, several delayed as far as the admin management analyst wasn't, uh, rehired nor the assistant city manager in what we thought we would. And so those savings are adding to the, to the bottom line. Moving on to the next page, it's a little, uh, it's a variation of what we showed you in the past. When we presented the budget, we included this slide, but only with a comparison of actual or a comparison of revenue to expenditures. Here we layered on, um, not only the actual, but the budgeted. Because what we wanted to reflect is although maybe we've budgeted, um, more in expenses or less in revenue, if you'll notice 24 and 25, those revenues are staying pretty flat. And yet, the expenses, you'll see it's, it's revealing more of that out, where it's outpacing the revenue. And it's not that we, we have strong revenues here in the city. And I think it's important for us to, to repeat that and, and for the, the community to know. The sales tax is strong, property tax is strong. It's just a matter of, it's the limitations that we have because of the size of our city or timing where we need to, uh, look at revenues from whether it's a master fee study or business license study to find more ways, um, on, on how our city can provide the services to the community and the programs that that costs. Okay, so next is slide at the, if, if, part of the city's, um, strength is we've set aside a reserve policy to set aside funds when there is a fund balance, so this is just a required. After the, the debt deficit or the, the use of funds, I'd like to say, uh, we would be expecting to have a fund balance of $15 million. But we do set aside funds for a recession reserve, unanticipated events, and then just fluctuation from the budget. So those total almost $9 million. And then we have other restrictions such as multi-year contracts, restrictions for pension plan, other sinking funds, loans and prepaid, so that's another 5.5 that we're expecting. So at the end of the day, um, out of those $15 million that we have, we would have about $568,000 of available fund if there is anything else that we needed to spend. Moving on to the next page is just a different look at the outstanding debt that we have. Just to keep in mind, this, these are just governmental bonds and loans that we have. So we wanted to kind of reflect so that as we're, as we're thinking about where we're spending, we want to look over the next few years. 2025, 2035, you'll see that there's gonna be a drop. So as, as the bonds and the loans are paid off, obviously, uh, overall debt drops. So if all things considered didn't change regarding debt, we would, those funds that are being used towards principal and interest would then be available to use again for other services for the city. So this is, uh, a visual of, of what our, our debt life looks like.
So, so Carolina, the, the B of A property, isn't it, is it part of this?
It is. So, uh, 2022, 70 Old County Road, right?
Okay, got it, got it.
So towards, towards the end, uh, since those two were, were done back to back, they're usually 20-year out, right? Okay. So finally, um, you know, so again, our revenues, we have a very strong base. However, we're in the Bay Area, San Mateo County, it's not cheap. So, and so for, for the current year, we already knew, uh, that we're gonna be dipping into the, our fund balance. So considerations that we have to make as we're starting to prepare, uh, 2526 budget is we have another raise coming up that's built into the MOU, um, in July 2025. And that's a range from 4 to 6%, um, per the MOU. We won't find out those numbers until after April CPI is announced. And then we also, we need to, again, we're, we're looking at different ways to enhance the, our, our revenue stream. So we have several studies planned. Insurance costs in California, um, are, are rising. What does that mean for us? We're still, we're still exploring that. U.S. fiscal policies can have a huge impact on us. We don't know what tariffs are gonna do, what fuel costs are gonna do. So those are all considerations that we have to consider. And then obviously, uh, the PERS unfunded liability as the markets impact, um, our pensions and, and what we've contributed, then it's whatever, that, that number of funded liability is a fluctuating number. And so we have to plan for that. So we've got a lot of work ahead of us, um, but I think the, the message is that the city is still well-positioned in that we have a good base, we have good policies. Staff is being very diligent about looking on how to, uh, perform and, uh, its services efficiently, economically and find other ways to, to do it or, um, looking for grants or other, other funding sources. So that's basically what I want to make sure that we end with, um, in, in, in our message to you. But I will definitely take questions if you have any.
All right, Carolina, thank you so much. All right, so start it off with Frank, you have any questions?
I, I do, Carolina, just a pretty quick one. It says here that we had two catch-up payments, um, for the transient occupancy tax. Can you just explain that?
Yeah, so there, there were a couple of, of checks that were sent from the, the hotel that got lost. And so when we went back to collect, then we just got replacement checks and it's a different fiscal year.
What an easy explanation, thank you.
Uh, Colleen?
I'll save any questions for another review of this, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one question. On your last page under fiscal impact, you have a statement that says the city expects its budgeted use of fund balance will be reduced to 1.3 in a deficit. But then it goes on to talk about rolled over to be considered for the fiscal year 2026 budget and to be used to pay for the level of service. The pension transfer, does that mean we didn't do an extra pension transfer as usual this year?
Not this year because it, it wasn't built in since we were already using funds to cover the expenses, so that wasn't built in. But if we were to come out, um, with a surplus instead, then it's up to the council if that's what's.
Okay, so this is talking about if there's a surplus.
Yes.
It's not that the maximum fund balance of anticipated of 568,000 would be going to pension transfer.
That is correct, it would not.
Okay. I wasn't sure of that wording, thank you.
NASA?
I don't have any question.
Carolina, thank you so much for the update.
Speed?
It was great. No, you know what, it was very comprehensive and it, it, uh, gives a very, uh, solid snapshot of where we are. Obviously, we still have some time left in the fiscal year and we'll see how it all shakes out. But, um, yeah, this was excellent.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, could, could you share with the council your slide deck?
Of course.
Because that was a really great illustration. We've got all the detail here, but the, seeing those comparisons was really well-presented.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we can. Okay, I'll make sure Ingrid can forward that.
Mr. Mayor, just no public comment or should we?
That's right, I'm sorry. I, I, I'm looking out on, in, in the audience, we don't have any members of the pub. Do we have members of the public, uh, online that have a hand raised?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you for letting me know. Thank you, Carolina.
Thank you.
All right, so, uh, it is 10:38, so, uh, we could probably, how long do you think it would take you, Jeremy, to get through the rest?
Uh, if there are no questions on item P, I can do it in less than two minutes.
I, I would, I would suggest we just do our report out on subcommittee meetings. Possibly next time, if staff could just include the existing staff report and then just tack it on the new subcommittees.
That'd be fine. If I could just ask a question, we have a new presentation based on the feedback from the council at the last meeting. I hope that meets your, your needs and if, if it didn't, just let me know offline and we can make a further modification.
It, it brings back the meeting, so yes, memory serves.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting to 10:45.
So moved.
Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye. All right, Jeremy.
The, uh, couple of events that I wanted to share. Monday night, um, in this facility, we'll be hosting a grief counseling session held by our friends at Cara. Two days previous to that, uh, we'll have our B of A, um, our first B of A, event to determine future use of the, of that site. The mayor has office hours on Wednesday and you're holding them.
At the Altamar Clubhouse.
Altamar Clubhouse, thank you very much.
From 6 to 7.
Youth storytelling is Tuesday, 4 to 6 at the library, the best PTO you heard about tonight. And, uh, finally, council priorities study session on March 22nd, thank you.
All righty, so we've decided to, uh, move mayor and council matters to our next meeting.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just bring one thing up and we're not discussing, it's not on the agenda, but something I would like added to the agenda based on people asking me questions about this is the implementation of, I don't remember the state bill number, no parking 20 feet from the crosswalks. Are we going to do any painting of curbs or white tee lines to mark where the spaces are on the major streets? Because nobody seems to know. And it would be helpful if there was something disseminated to the community about whether that's going to happen. The triangular signs that are put at the corners are always falling over.
Yeah, I, I know that there's, you, you, it could probably just go out in a blast.
We'll, we'll put something on the blast. The short answer is that we're targeting the, the areas that have the, uh, most significant issues. So that's where we would consider doing some of the painting.
Talking about that too, yeah, I get, I've been getting the same complaints, so.
Same.
All right, so, uh, written communications.
Um, written communication was received from Mangiameli regarding urgent request for enhanced traffic safety and police enforcement. Orleans Caya, San Bruno Mountain Quarry, Lozaro Botanical Gardens for the Quarry, Klamah Warehouse, Khalil Resignation, Crossley Safe Streets, and Lee Traffic and Safety and Visitation during peak times.
Okay, great, okay. So oral communications number two, anyone online, Ingrid?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so we will adjourn until our next meeting, thank you everyone. I guess I'm supposed to do this, right?